Okay, I'd like to call the City of Urbana Committee of the Hall Meeting to order for Monday, May 2nd, 2022. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here.
And next, on the agenda, approval of minutes of previous meetings, that is for April 4th, 2022, and the April 5th, 2022 ARPA listening session. Can I get a motion for approval? In a second?
Second.
Is it Jaya? Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Are there any additions to the agenda or changes? Mayor Marlin?
Thank you. We have two. First of all, I am sorry to announce that the discussion on the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues is going to be moved to next week. Public Works Director Tim Cowan is ill today and wasn't able to give the presentation. And then, secondly, I have a request to move item number eight, which is the budget amendment up to right under the staff report due to staff scheduling.
Okay. Are there any objections to the movement of item eight to be item six? Okay, so yeah, we can do that. Do we need to vote on that? We don't need to vote on that, right?
Voice vote?
Voice vote.
Okay, so would the clerk please call the roll?
No.
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we'll do that. And... Public input, next is public input and presentations. We'll just move straight to public input. Anyone that has, would like to speak to an agenda item, please feel free to come to the mic.
Good evening, I'm Eric Sacks. I'd like to speak in opposition to the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. As you have seen in our earlier voices of West Urbana petition in late 2021, as, and again by the many recent emails that you have received, the residents of West Urbana care greatly about this neighborhood and about the city. We agree with the goal of saving the Greek houses and the boarding houses, if necessary, by repurposing them, and appreciate some of the recent staff compromises, such as the special use permit instead of by right, and then by residential versus business signage. However, the current version of the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance is still deeply flawed. You know, from the beginning of our discussions with staff about the zoning ordinance, we've been clear and consistent that there should be two major pieces to this. One, there should be a differentiation between the Greek houses and the boarding houses. They were built for very different purposes, they're very different sizes. And secondly, there should be a difference between west of Lincoln and east of Lincoln. And admittedly, the staff has agreed that there should be a difference between the Greek and boarding houses, yet it still proposes a one-size-fits-all policy. And this shouldn't be a process where we develop a bad policy and then try to fix it at a later date. We should develop correct policies from the beginning. Moreover, the proposed revisions promote businesses in a residential area, West Urbana, which our earlier petition made clear is not what the community wants. We want the low-to-moderate density residential character of the neighborhood maintained. I think the current language is suitable for west of Lincoln. However, east of Lincoln, the potential allowable businesses should probably be trimmed back. For example, we wouldn't really want bars and liquor stores in our neighborhood. And secondly, all the boarding houses east of Lincoln should be removed from this revision entirely, and we should have, if we're gonna have a revision to the boarding houses R7, we should make a purposeful effort to get it right from the beginning. Thanks so much, we really appreciate your listening to the neighborhood and hearing what we have to say. Thanks so much.
Chair, I have some clarifying questions to... Eric?
No.
Mm-mm.
You can't.
I thought public input, we could ask questions?
No.
No?
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Esther Pat. I live on the corner of Kohler and Nevada, where in the last five years, we've had two armed robberies. More about that later. Tonight, you're being asked to vote to approve a policy that would allow commercial uses on any piece of property that is zoned R7 without requiring any provision for parking for the employees or the customers. There's actually no need whatsoever for businesses next door to single-family homes between Bucie and Orchard from Oregon to Pennsylvania, which is the entire area that's affected by this proposal. And I don't know anyone who wants a business there, other than the people who own land where they could make more money by putting in a business without having to provide parking. And I believe that's one of the main reasons this proposal is before you. Putting in businesses and providing no parking for customers or employees has a very large negative impact on any area, and especially an area that is so fragile as where I live. Right now, there already are people who live close to Lincoln Avenue who have to walk more than two blocks late at night alone to get from the place they can park their car to where they live. And if you add even one business with no parking off-street for the customers and employees, because there's this mythology, pro-developer mythology, that people just don't have cars anymore, so you have to need parking, that's baloney. One business will eliminate at least one block of parking. And people who now walk two blocks are gonna have to walk three or four. And since you want to do the same thing residentially to allow any R7 use to increase the number of people who live there without adding at least one parking space, that puts even more distance between where people have to leave their cars and where they actually live. We have a parking crisis in the first three blocks east of Lincoln Avenue that was created by the City of Urbana's planning and zoning decisions that were made, I don't know, just for the purpose of serving developers, and without any regard for the reality that safety on the street cannot be provided if people can't park anywhere near their homes. And it seems the philosophy here is that people don't really need to live close to their homes if they're students or they are tenants, which of course is morally wrong. Parking close to one's home is not a luxury. And every time I look out my window between 10:00 and 11:30 at night, when I hear a car door slam and see a total stranger park in front of my house, or my home, I live in an apartment building actually, and then walk off of our block, I think of those two armed robberies that happened right at the same place where they're getting out of their cars, I mean, almost within feet. And I wonder how many blocks is that woman gonna have to walk alone in our neighborhood to get to her home? And how many more blocks are people gonna have to walk after you enact this broad proposal? If you want to convert another fraternity to an apartment use like what happened on Vermont and Lincoln, I mean, it happened in one place, there was no problem, so now you have this massive radical proposal to totally undo the zoning in our neighborhood just to accommodate that, all you have to do is tell the developer who wants to convert the fraternity into an R5 use to apply to the city for an R5 permit to change the zoning on that one land. I know that might sound like a radical idea, but imagine in my neighborhood that the use on the property matches the zoning of the piece of property. It's something we need more of. I encourage you to put people's safety ahead of the profit interests of a dozen owners who want to squeeze yet more money out of students by building in our neighborhood without providing for any parking whatsoever. It won't hurt me, you know, when I lived in this neighborhood for 10 years without a car and only got attacked once, my oh my, did I feel it was important for people to be able to park close to their homes. I can afford, I own my place, I can afford to have parking on-site, but I think it's just a terrible policy to decide that the people in the neighborhood who have to rent their housing there, if you want a furnished apartment, you have to rent in the campus area, and so you have to rent someplace where the city deliberately does not provide enough parking. I'm not asking you to fix the damage that was done by all the people who came before you, but I beg you, don't make it worse. No new human density without appropriate parking. Thank you.
All right, Alan McSacksrod, resident of Urbana. Just want to thank Eric Sacks and Esther Pat for speaking. I mean, Esther knows her stuff. Listen to her. Regarding the earlier comments, I want to correct one thing that I, two things that I had said. For one, you know, thank you for making the right call, I didn't realize that you had already bundled with other cities, that's the appropriate move. I want to thank Grace Wilken for mentioning municipalization. That's the same decision made by Bloomington Normal, that's the same decision made by Springfield, that's the same decision made by Jacksonville, and so many other communities. Now, Mayor Marlin, you made a remark about how corporate utilities have an advantage over municipal utilities. That's actually true. In fact, it was stated in an earnings call by American Waterworks, where they were saying due to PFOS and PFAS contamination, and the fact that they had invested in that filtration technology, they were better suited. Anybody who's been looking at the contamination due to those chemicals in our region knows what that means. It's already in Rantoul, when are they gonna find it for us? So, one of the things that I would say is that when looking into the options of municipalization, let's see if that economy of scale is caught up, because that one was decade-plus-old, that remark that was made during their earnings call. That said, I'm going to emphasize some things regarding American Water, but I also want to note that the Illinois Commerce Commission is a kangaroo court. We gave them all the facts regarding the pandemic last year, and they still voted to allow utility shut-offs, which Governor Pritzker had to spend $80 million within three weeks of that decision to cover it up. He has appointed all but one commissioner to the Illinois Commerce Commission at this point. So honestly, if there's any action taken, you need to send copies of that to him, because during the no Ameren shut-offs campaign, we have successfully used Governor Pritzker against the Illinois Commerce Commission, I have no qualms saying that. Now that said, let's just run off a list again. At no quarter during this pandemic has Illinois American Water, through their parent company, American Waterworks, seen a decrease in their profits per share. And how they measure it is they measure relative to the previous year's identical financial quarter. And before I get into this, just remember, the monopoly board has what on it? Waterworks. There's a reason they don't have the American on there, and it's because they'd have to pay them money. So, quarter two, 2020, relative to quarter two, 2019, profit increase of 3.19%. Quarter three, relative to the previous year, 9.9%. Quarter four, 48.15%. Quarter one, 2021, relative to the previous year, 7.35%. Quarter two, relative to the first quarter of the pandemic in 2021, relative to the 2020, 21.28%. Quarter three, 2021, 15.04% compared to quarter three, 2020. Quarter four, 2021, 8.7%. I misquoted some of the figures earlier to you, relative to quarter four, 2020. Quarter one, 2022, 19.17% increase. And they're asking for a 32.9% increase? They should be offering you a discount.
Good evening, City Council members and residents. My name is Tracy Chong, and I live in West Urbana. I support the current proposal for the R7 Urbana zoning ordinance. I think it is fair, and it leaves the possibility of allowing alternative purposes for existing R7 properties, which still has to go through community, commission, and city council input. I think it's fair. The vision for neighborhood transformation is great. I wholeheartedly agree with Plan Commissioner Sims that watching neighborhoods transform and change, that people are imagining living differently, are something to have an open mind about, especially as demographics are changing. I personally have lived in several places where businesses and residential housing intermingle, and it is a great experience. Also, regarding the worry about parking spaces, if people did live closer to businesses, they probably wouldn't need cars as much, and they wouldn't have to walk as far, which is safer. The emails that I've read from people opposing this proposal, the very loud-spoken voices, especially after city staff have worked so hard on accommodating public opinion, I feel like these comments, they have used all kinds of classist language. For example, they use language such as degradation of our community, our neighborhood needing and deserving protection, predominantly single-family residential areas, degrading attractiveness of living, as well as calling other neighborhoods nearby concrete squallers. I mean, that's terrible. They also make it known about investing in the neighborhood and keep shouting about protecting our housing investments as owner-occupied residents. This is kind of sad, and I think it's also hypocritical, as some of these voices do have their own rental properties, they own apartment buildings, and I suppose also to protect the rights of tenants. Many of these loud voices seem opposed to alternative forms of housing. For example, if eight friends, or eight coworkers, or even eight strangers, if they choose to live together, and I think that's a very sustainable option for people to live together, who are we to say if this kind of housing arrangement is allowed or disallowed? By opposing such living arrangements, this is being discriminatory against people who have other living arrangements other than the traditional single-family housing that we think about. So, once again, I support proposals like this that encourage more housing and business options, opens up the possibility to different demographics, looks towards the future, is not classist, and is not discriminatory. And I urge you to support this proposal and vote yes. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Shelley Ogul, I live at 1003 South Bucie, right next to a rooming house on the corner of Iowa and Bucie. A rooming house that is actually, it's complicated, we won't get into that. Basically, I just want to say that I do agree with Eric Sacks's proposal that you hold off on okaying the planning staff's text amendment until it clearly separates east of Lincoln properties from west of Lincoln properties, and until it differentiates between frat houses and rooming houses. Go ahead and make the law straight and clear and clean and precise from the beginning. Don't start with an error and then try to correct it. Thank you.
Is there any more input?
Hello, my name is Michael Pleva. I've had the pleasure of talking with you before, and I stand in opposition to the radical rezoning issue for R7. And I'm not trying to be discriminatory, I'm trying to ask this unit to please give us the zoning that many of us who have invested our lives into our properties. My wife and I bought our house, which was a rather ramshackled house, in 1978, and we've poured our time and money and love into this facility, and we have been part of the backbone of our neighborhood that has achieved a national award for one of the best places to live in the United States. I love living in West Urbana. My wife and I walked to our laboratory, and in fact, after 48 years, we're actually shutting our lab down in about three or four days, so I'm gonna be free. There are a number of things, we heard about fear, about impacts onto our quality of life, onto the stability of a neighborhood that is highly diverse. When we moved in, we were the young kids on the block. Now, I'm the old guy, I won't say anything about my wife, but I'm the old guy, but on either side of us, two assistant professors have moved in. Do you think they would have moved in if there can be a R7 building that can put in businesses next door to them? And in fact, if I walk out my front door, I can see five R7-zoned buildings, three on Ohio Street and two down on Iowa Street. These could be converted like that into buildings that by themselves, if I tried to change my zoning or get a conditional use permit, I'd have to be jumping through hoops. But city staff wants to do this in one fell swoop. Think about this, you are our representatives. I didn't elect, I did not elect a city staff, a set of technocrats. We elected you to be the voice of the people, and we please, we ask you to please consider thoughtfully and make this zoning change something that we can all live with. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Paul Hickson, I live at 209 West Indiana, and I've also spoken with you before about the zoning matter. First off, I noted when I came in tonight, the instruction sheet about public input, and the instruction sheet does say that email input must include the words "public input" and the meeting date. I sent to you today, to the council, an email, pardon me, that had slightly different language.
I've got it here if you want me to read it.
Input to City Council R7 Proposal. I hope that that meets within, that is acceptable and meets within your requirement. Now to the points that I wanted to make to you. I'm a lot like Mike. I've lived in this neighborhood a long time, I bought my home in 1977. I was the young guy. And here's why I bought it. I bought it because I wanted to be able to walk to work or bike, and I did. And I still, as a retired guy, I have an emeritus office, and I go in multiple times a week to campus. I don't, I have one car, we've never had more than one car. I also bought our house so that my kids could go to Lille, Urbana Middle School and High School. They did, they're now adults. My wife wanted to be able to walk to Urbana Downtown District, and we do frequently. Now, I love this community. I've sent you emails recently on this topic, in which I even shared photos of some of the areas that are really precious in this neighborhood that need protection. But I believe that my neighborhood is under increasing attack. I believe that it is the result of activities by realtors and developers, started near Lincoln and keeps moving east. And now, it's aided by, and I don't know the motivation for it, but city staff planners that keep making suggested plans to council for changes that would more rapidly change this neighborhood. I have, in addition to recommending to you that you reject the current proposal, send it back with a request that more work be done on it, I want to support the suggestions that were advanced by Tina Gonzalez and Michael Walker and others on the following four points. Differentiate between east and west of Lincoln and create separate rules for those spaces. Require any uses not presently permitted by right to require special use permits. Preserve all current parking requirements. And if we are not able to convert these former Greek houses to some other alternative purpose, revert the zoning to match the lowest density standard of surrounding parcels. I ask this in the same spirit that Mike did. Our neighborhood needs protection. 25 years ago, I was confident I had that. It's now up to you guys. Please, I ask you, as you look at this, regardless of which ward you come from and which party you represent, that we protect every neighborhood in Urbana. And right now, West Urbana needs some protection. Thank you.
Is there any more input from the public?
Good evening.
You can take the mic off of the stand. Okay.
I can't touch it. Yeah, I can't touch things. I don't have my gloves on. Okay, good evening. I'd like to say that we are Angel's Youth Center. We were just on the news, Channel 3 News, WCIA. We reached out to the community for help. We've been coming to the city council since 2008. It flipped from Lori Preston to Brandon, now it's Mayor Marlin and the staff, new staff. 2014, we reached out for Youth Center, asked for Lincoln Square, different lands and spaces in Urbana. I did daycare in the Youth Center in my home for years, but when COVID hit, I caught COVID and almost died, stayed in the hospital 14 days. So of course, I wanted out my home, you would too, right? Because that's where you live at. Now, we own different businesses. Now, we never had to ask for anything. But COVID hit the courts, and it affect daycare, Youth Center, it affect our other cleaning company, it affect things. So, we have an elder catering and care restaurant. That was denied. They beat us down, public health wanted it, wanted that, okay, nobody reached out, helped us, okay? We dealt with Sheila Mann, Sheila died, and Brandon Boy. Turned down for funding, turned down for the building we had, cool, no problem, I'm still moving on. Now, everyone say apply for that grant in Urbana. I said, no, I ain't gonna apply no more, I applied for eight years, and I'm tired now. I don't care if I get funding or not. I've been doing this, all our children come from under us, actually, you'll see on the news, we're gonna make sure they do testimony. Because we have doctors, nurses, lawyers, we have police, we have military people come from our center that we invested in and didn't ask y'all for a penny, not a dime. from our center that we invested in and didn't ask y'all for a penny, not a dime. We invested in the youth, you know why? Because we care about the youth. We don't care about the money. That's first and foremost. I want to let you know that. We took our hard-earned money, invested in children we don't even know. I have two children, a girl and a boy. That's it. But you know how many I gained? Over 10,000 kids around the world. I'm a youth pastor. That's first and foremost. And if I wasn't, I still love my youth. They'll tell you that's who I am, okay? This grant was turned down. I'd like to know what comment was made and from who, and why we as a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). And it says here, "Thank you for applying for the Urbana Youth Service Grant for FY2022- 2023." That's through. Many worthwhile organizations apply for a limited amount of grants funding. Due to the competitive nature of this grant, Angel Youth Center was not selected for funding at this time. Please see the attached letter that I haven't gotten through this email yet. I reached back out, I'm looking for the letter that they want me to see why they denied me. I even emailed Brandon Bachelor, Braden Bachelor, emailed him back and said, can you tell me or give me the comment or tell me the name of the person whoever denied me? You know? And we want to know what reason. But on here, I love what you said. This says, "The City of Urbana greatly appreciate the important work your agency does in the community every day, and we sincerely thank you for the time and effort you put into this grant application." Isn't it amazing? I could show you every time we apply for grant in Urbana, that little sweet little...
Trump did it.
That little sweet little word of, "Thank you for all of your great work." But it's not great enough, it seems, for me to receive funding for my ballot. So, however, you might not give me a dime, and I come out here to tell you something right now. You know who they call for when children in trouble in this youth? Actually, I just had two people come to my house and said, "We need you at Urbana High School."
Ms. Johnson, your time is up. Your time is up.
Okay.
But thank you for your comments.
Okay, okay, let me say this.
You got one?
I would go, if Urbana say that you're a city, y'all gonna give me money like y'all gave everybody else coming our community.
Your time is up, ma'am. I'm sorry. Thank you.
But long as you hear me. Y'all deny me again. That's why I said I wasn't gonna apply. I'm a taxpayer, homeowner, and I can't get one dime of my own tax money back. But y'all spreading it out throughout our community. You build everything casinos, all kind of stuff in our community. Just open up new liquor stores up on follow.
Ms. Johnson. I know, I'm sorry. Your time is up.
That don't make sense. Y'all putting the money in the wrong place. You're not investing. Invest in us, the ones that give you the money to do what you're doing right now.
You've had input tonight, I'm sorry.
I thought I had a total of five minutes permitted. Is that not correct?
One input per meeting, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's the rule.
I was told the rule was five minutes.
Is there anyone who has not given input that would like to give input right now? Go ahead. If you have not given input already.
No, I have not.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Renee Bullock. I have attended a county meeting before. Anyway, I, anyway, I've been given the FY fiscal year printout with no charge of 736 pages of the bookkeeping in Urbana, Illinois. And I can't say that I judge or trust that every figure is correct because I used, I grew up in Newman. I've been here before, if y'all remember me. My daughters had two transplants, blah, 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 and I, anyway. But anyway, I cannot trust that with my experience. I lived outside of DC, 9.8 miles, for eight years, and I've been in politics covering them my whole life. But I cannot trust your FYI fiscal year of 21, 22, because I'm not into bookkeeping, and I cannot verify your accounts receivable and payable. So it was, I could have been charged every page. Yes, but I wasn't. But I opened it up, and I'm very knowledgeable with politics my whole life. I worked for IDOT, I plowed the snow. The last time I was here, I showed my picture, me plowing the snow, my daughter having transplants, my daughter picture. But Mayor, I'm very concerned. Last time, your office didn't return my calls. Two months ago, you said that we have to apply for a grant, and my concern was our road repair. Why do we have to apply for a grant? We have these marijuana stores that made $20 billion last year in revenue in the United States. We have the gambling casinos, okay? I realize in '77, I lived in DC, there was Pelosi, all of them, Schumer, Schmidt, Nadler, Cheney, all of them out there. I know them all. They had kids, grandkids, and all that. So it's, it's like a pyramid in politics. I know it all. But you said we had to apply for a grant to fix our roads. The last time I was here, I was like, look out, Broadway, Illinois, Lincoln Avenue. And you're planting flowers, if you remember me, you know? And they get watered. When I plowed the snow for IDOT for eight years, I plowed the snow, I had a CDL, all right, a woman. I plowed the snow, you know? And I had a terminally ill daughter. She's still here. We're gonna celebrate nine years in her second transplant, a total of 21 years with two transplants. My daughter alive. And I, you know, but you said on TV you're applying for a grant for our roads. Cook County's been flowing money down here forever, you know? What, the marijuana store? The, I think Carl's exempt from taxes, but all the gambling places? Why, you said that, apply for a grant? Our revenue, where's it going? To all the kids and grandkids and all that? Seriously? There's enough revenue. Urbana never made the revenue. Champagne did, never did. We do now. There's a, but you said that on TV. What grant are you applying for? For the road repair? Mayor? You said that on TV, I heard you. What grant is available? And don't get out of it. You said that on TV.
It's not a matter of her getting out of it, we just don't talk back right now.
Really?
Yeah, really.
Democrat, what, really? What?
That's the rules.
Who's talking to me? I don't even know who's talking to me. She can't answer my question?
We don't, we're allowing you to do your input.
I'm doing my thing.
Okay, so, finish.
I heard my mayor, that I pay her, some of my money goes to her. You said on TV you're applying for a grant for road repair. I heard you, I saw you. I'm not lying. You think I come in here and lie? What grant is it? Can you explain the grant? Because that's not in the fiscal year book I got. Don't shake and go get all disappointed because you can't tell the truth. You said it, Mayor. Where's the money coming from for this grant? Okay, I'll finish it. I'll finish it.
Thank you.
No, don't thank me.
Hello. My name is Bob Stillinger. I live at 1003 South Bucy. My family lived there since, and I lived there in 1972. I recently bought the property back from my mom's estate, thank you. And about three years ago, without any knowledge that somebody might want to put something commercial next door at 801 Iowa, I've written a couple of emails and have described the layout of the property. But the only thing that separates our house from the house that wants, that could be zoned commercial is a driveway that is a mutual easement for both of us. And there's, you know, then there's a foot of property and a, on one side of it and a foot of property on the other. It is just not appropriate for commercial property, and it's not fixing a problem. They have had renters there for all 50 years that my family has lived there. So we are creating a problem and not, and there's no problem to fix, so I am requesting that you don't zone it commercial, or with the potential to be commercial. I'm not sure, I just recently learned that it's rented as a single-family residence, and somebody proposed that that doesn't even qualify as a rooming or a boarding house. I don't know if that is true, but it is rented for a single price to the guys that live there. At any rate, I will not take five minutes. I just want to request that there's no problem there. Please don't zone it commercial. It would be horrible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the city council? Okay, at this time?
Trice, I have some emails to read.
Oh yeah, I was, I was gonna read. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the first one says, "Dear esteemed city council members, please do not vote in favor of the Planning Commission's ill-conceived recommendation for changes to the R7 ordinance. Does not make sense that there is no distinction between west of Lincoln, which is a mix of commercial university buildings and some student apartments, and east of Lincoln, which is a fully residential neighborhood. It also does not distinguish between the Greek and boarding houses. Why has the Planning Commission not listened and responded appropriately to the extensive input from the residential neighborhood that also came up with a more appropriate plan? Why do they throw the Wuna neighborhood under the bus? Are they looking for more taxes at the expense of destroying a gem of a neighborhood? Why are they not looking at downtown Urbana? It's a two-block failure with heaps of unused parking lots, yet they want to destroy the West Urbana neighborhood instead? Why any of the Planning Commission members like, sorry, would any of the Planning Commission members like a brewery next to their house? There's no need for businesses east of Lincoln. It is already available west of Lincoln. In the pandemic era that we continue to live in, office spaces are not needed. What is needed is for the Greek houses to convert to older age independent living housing. The large boomer generation is aging, and the Greek houses with communal areas would not need extensive conversion. Each boarding house should be treated individually and converted back to R1 or R2 properties. The owners who have milked the properties could use it as a tax loss and sell it to the city for a dollar. The city could then give incentives to any future owner occupier of that property. A creative win-win situation for all. Please do not pass the Planning Commission's proposal. Thank you again for your attention. High regards, Louis Steinberg."
Any other council members with some input to read in?
I have a few more, but go ahead.
Mary Alice?
I have some input from Marie Pierre, who lives at 806 West Nevada and is a current homeowner. They urge the city council and other departments of the City of Urbana to apply the recommendations Vow has made to the R7 issues. They agree with Vow wholeheartedly, and they say that they can add their strong voice to theirs. It seems that the City of Urbana doesn't understand the value of our neighborhood every year, so it seems we have to fight for our neighborhood, stating the obvious, West Lincoln is not East Lincoln. There is a clear border. Let our neighborhood thrive. We are a diverse village. We have our own identity. We love our neighborhood the way it is, and we want to keep its identity and character. I invite the city to promote downtown Urbana to developers. They can create the buildings on the west side of Lincoln Avenue. Marie Pierre.
Anyone else? You got one more? Jaya? Two more? Can I read? I have two that I wanted to read. And Mr. Hickson, I'm going, I did get your, your input. I'm going to pass this down to, to our city clerk, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Dear Urbana City Council, we are 20-year residents of West Urbana and have had to stand up for our neighborhood countless times. We do not understand why our neighborhood is under constant barrage by city planners who should be upholding the comprehensive plan and promoting the unique value of our neighborhood and instead are constantly trying to sell it out to encourage inappropriate and thoughtless high-density development. We strongly urge you to reject the currently proposed plans being advocated by the Department of Community Development Services and to send it back to the planning staff for revision. We also strongly support suggestions by Tina Gonzalez and Michael Walker that any plan that is finally approved should address the following four main points. One, differentiate between east and west of Lincoln Avenue and create separate rules for each area. Two, require any uses not presently permitted by, by right to require special use permits. Three, preserve all current parking requirements for revert zoning to match the lowest density zoning standard of surrounding parcels if redevelopment of existing buildings is not possible. Thank you for your consideration and service. Sincerely, Becky Mead and Tim Steltzer. And I won't give their address, but could you pass that down to me? Thank you. The next letter is, "Dear Urbana City Council Members, I strongly urge you to reject the currently proposed plans being advocated by the Department of Community Development Services and to send it back to the planning staff for revision. I also strongly support the suggestions by Tina Gonzalez and Michael Walker that any plan that is finally approved should address the main following point, the four main points. Differentiate east and west Lincoln and create separate rules for each area. Require any uses not presently permitted by right to require special use permits. Preserve all current parking requirements. Revert zoning to match the lowest density zoning standard of surrounding parcels if redevelopment of existing businesses is not possible. I have been an active citizen and attended almost all of the West Urbana neighborhood outreach events held by city staff to receive feedback on R7 proposals. I have been disappointed in each of these community forums at how little the staff listens and uses neighborhood feedback to change their proposals. In the last meeting with them, it came out that one of their motivations has been to reduce the work they have on dealing with special permits and PUDs related to these R7 properties. I find it sad that city staff do not, do not feel listening to those living in Urbana matters and that the uniqueness of West Urbana worth their, and the uniqueness of West Urbana worth their time in preserving. In addition to rejecting the proposed plans, I ask that the city council clarify that the goals and focus of the city development staff should have with regard to working, I'm sorry, should have with regard to working with neighborhoods. I look forward to a day when it is a partnership of shared goals for my neighborhood and the City Department of Community Development Services. Thank you, Leslie Sherman, Urbana, Illinois. Thank you very much. Jaya?
All right. This one says, "Dear Jaya, I'm communicating with you since you're my representative on the city council, but I'd like my views to be shared with the rest of the council. I don't live within 300 feet of any R7 properties, so I didn't get a postcard, but I do have views on this proposal that I'd like to share. I think that the proposed changes to the uses of these Greek houses as written are a mistake and should be voted down. As was the consensus of the Urbana Historic Preservation Commission at our meeting when we met online with city staff to review these changes. I feel that the main objections to this set of new uses is that all of the properties are treated the same regardless of their surroundings. The surroundings are most different from those located on west, on or west of Lincoln Avenue and those east of Lincoln. There should be two sets of rules depending on which side of Lincoln the properties are on. In the more institutional west, the proposed new uses would generally be okay. In the residential east, they're creating potential uses that are at conflict with current use in the surrounding area. These R7 properties are basically spot-zoned as higher-density housing uses and otherwise mostly homogeneous single-family R1 and R2 blocks. I understand why we ended up with these spot-zone properties. I was taught when I was on the Plan Commission that spot zoning is bad. Now the planners are proposing spot commercial uses of property in residential neighborhoods east of Lincoln. I'd say this is worse than spot zoning. There is empty commercial property all over Urbana. I see no reason to encourage property that is now earmarked for residential use to be allowed to be used for certain commercial uses. If a fraternity house is sitting empty, perhaps it could be converted into a few condominiums. I could guess there, there could be some really amazing configurations of condos with a fireplace and some of the ornate features many of these houses have. There should still be off-street parking required for any new residential uses as the streets already have a high parking burden. Many students and employed community who might live there would have cars." Many students and employee community who might live there would have cars. If these existing Greek houses are not saved, I think the land should revert to R1 or R2 or whatever the lowest surrounding zoning is. Apartment buildings should not be allowed to replace the Greek houses. I urge you to vote down this proposal and send it back to the planning staff for revisions. Thank you, Trent Shepherd. And then this one went to myself, Anne Mary Alice. I don't know. You want me to read it?
Go ahead.
Okay. Richard Lazarus, an eminent environmental lawyer and professor of law at Harvard, said it best. During a recent visit to Urbana, Lazarus told the News Gazette, quote, "There's no place I'd rather talk about my work. A world-class university with fabulous students, no better place to come back to than Urbana," end quote. The News Gazette continued, quote, "Lazarus describes an idyllic childhood growing up on Vermont Street where kids would run around the neighborhood, had free rein at local parks, lived in walking distance from his schools. It's a fabulous place, a wonderful peer group, Lazarus said. I'm still close with a lot of my friends from then," end quote. It is this unique sense of community that West Urbana enjoys. A viable, thriving residential neighborhood near a world-class university where kids can play freely and walk to school, where neighbors become friends for life. The proposed changes to the R7 zoning will only destabilize, sorry, destabilize, excuse me, this neighborhood. They merely strive to create another MOR, which promotes transience and lack of green space over the values of a longtime community. As a measure of our belief in the worth of this unique sense of community in West Urbana, my husband and I are building an aging-friendly net-zero home in the neighborhood. We will never recoup our expenses, but we fervently believe that building for the future will establish a worthwhile legacy. It's our gift to future generations. Once an ardent historic preservationist, I now prefer to call myself an ardent neighborhood preservationist. Building standards evolve, termites and neglect promote teardowns such as the house we tore down at 303 West Nevada. Preserving the neighborhood of West Urbana should be the most strategic and vital goal of the city council. I ask you to deny the proposed zoning regulations that favor the pockets of the developers over the preferences of residents as voiced by the voices of West Urbana and reflected in petitions and neighborhood meetings. Please focus commercial growth in downtown where it's desperately needed, not in West Urbana. Please promote preservation of the West Urbana neighborhood and the unique assets it embraces. Thank you for your consideration. Liz Cardman.
Okay, is that all the input we have regarding this tonight? Okay, moving on then. Next, we have staff report. Okay, Mayor Marlin has staff report.
Just a couple of things. One, last week, the question came up if there were any vacancies on the Plan Commission, and there is one remaining vacancy on the Plan Commission. I also wanted to extend my sincere thank you to each and every person who helped make the 13th Christie Clinic Race Week into success. Under the leadership of former chief, Police Chief Bryant Seraphin, Chief Rich Surles, Deputy Chief Matt Bane, Public Works Operation Director Vince Gustafson, and Lieutenant Zachary Mikulik, Chief Chuck Los, and City Administrator Carol Mitten, the city of Urbana stepped up to help to make this race weekend happen in the face of challenges of area-wide staffing shortages, COVID-19. In addition to the people I just mentioned, we had 10 additional public works employees, five additional patrol officers plus those on duty, two additional firefighters also working over the weekend. They were joined by a dozen, I believe a dozen, officers from the Illinois State Police and officers from neighboring agencies, along with other personnel who provided additional critical public safety staffing. These race weekends, even a pared-down weekend like we had, do not happen without a massive amount of personnel from many different places. I also want to thank all the community volunteers, especially in Urbana. You made this race a positive and a joyful experience. There was music, there were cowbells, there were cheering people, there were people in costumes all along the race route in Urbana, and it just showed pride in the community. And I have to say, participating in the 5K, being there at the 10K, kind of walking around during the day, people were overjoyed to be out and about after a three-year hiatus. The revised race routes really showcased our city and our campus beautifully. So again, thank you to all who contributed to making this a success. It was good for the body and the soul. Thank you.
And now moving on to the business of the city, we have ordinance number 2022-05-017, an ordinance revising the annual budget, budget amendment number seven, omnibus. And I'm assuming that.
Ally.
Ally, thank you. And?
Good evening, everyone. So this is the seventh budget amendment to the fiscal year 2022 budget. So we have a couple of changes that affect the budget, so I will go through these items quickly. The first one, under general operating fund, it's regarding the budget overtime and fire department. They have experienced an unusual amount of overtime this year, and so we are requesting an increase of $130,094 to account for projected leave related to duty injuries, light duty assignments, and leave related to COVID. The second item, under local motor fuel tax fund, so this is just a re-budget, so we are requesting to carry over fiscal year 2021 and spend funds of about $140,000 to cover costs for litigation related to Windsor Road project. Under state motor fuel tax fund, so Resolution 2022-04-028R, supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, was approved in April to fund additional $75,000 to the Ray Street resurfacing project. So this amendment is to reflect that increase. And under VERF, we did a budget amendment back in January to do the network infrastructure replacement project. So that included purchase of new virtual servers. So this amendment is to request an increase of $12,550. There was, so the quotes came back higher than the estimates, so we are requesting to move necessary funds out of the equipment line item and IT technology fund to the VERF to cover that increase. So that also relates to the item under IT fund. And then under cable TV peg fund, $50,000 is requested to accelerate the replacement of microphones and related audio equipment for the council chambers to address the recent issues with sound quality. And then the last item related to the CARES Act Emergency Shelter Grant, so they reallocated about $5,000 to Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, so this amendment is to reflect that grant reallocation reduction in fiscal 2022 budget. So that will also be reflected in both revenues and expenditures. And I think I've gone through the items. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Ally? Mary Alice?
Hi, thanks, Ally. I am, if I remember correctly, the cable TV peg fund, that is, there's a, people who subscribe to cable, there's a certain amount of money that comes in for that. Is that how that fund is refreshed?
Yes, and I'm going to ask Carol to confirm that.
Yes, that's the way, that's the way it works.
That's the way it works. So this $50,000, I'm assuming we don't have anything equivalent to a VERF for, I mean, that's, right, we don't have anything like that.
Not for the peg funds.
Right. So if $50,000 is in addition to our, to what is budgeted for that fund, does that, so that doesn't mean that there'll be anything coming out of any other funds to cover that? That's just an additional expense?
That is just an additional, that's right.
Okay. Was it planned to be replaced in future fiscal years?
Yes, so that was, so most of these are, were planned in 2023, and then some of it are planned in future years, so we will reflect that change.
Okay, all right. And then I just think it would be helpful, I know that we, I believe we already moved money to overtime from fire operations in a previous budget amendment. I think for the next, if this moves forward to city council, it would be good to know the total amount that we have moved this fiscal year.
So I believe about $160,000, the last budget amendment that we did, do you remember?
In addition to the $130?
In addition to that, yes.
Okay, so we're at $300,000 overtime.
For this fiscal year.
For this fiscal year. But we have a grant to hire six more. Will that alleviate some of this overtime that we're paying?
Yes, it will. Right now, because of duty injuries, sick leave, and COVID, we're averaging about $30,000 every two weeks in overtime. We've had several duty injuries this year. The additional safer candidates will come back next week, and so that will give us two additional members per shift, which will help cut down on overtime.
Do we have any estimate in terms of how much overtime we've had due to COVID?
Yes. This is, this is as of the end of last, last week, sorry, I'm getting my glasses on. We had $85,126 just from COVID leave.
Just for the fiscal year?
Yes.
All right.
Could you move the mic closer to your mouth?
I'm sorry.
All right, thank you very much.
Any more questions, comments, motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mary Alice?
I'll move ordinance number 2022-05-017, an ordinance revising the annual budget, budget amendment number seven, omnibus, to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Second, anybody?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-05-015, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance, R7 University Residential Text Amendment, Plan Case 2438-2-22. And this is community development, and we have Kat.
Yes, you have Kat.
Closer to your mouth so we can actually, you can pull the mic towards you so you don't have to.
How's that?
Yeah, that's way better.
Great.
And we have Kevin Garcia. Thank you very much.
All right. The zoning administrator proposes to amend Article 5 of the zoning ordinance to allow or to add new special uses for existing buildings in the R7 University Residential zoning district. The text amendment would also amend Articles 8 and 9 to alter parking requirements and sign regulations for commercial uses in the district. At their April 21st meeting, the Plan Commission unanimously recommended that the city council approve the proposed text amendment while directing staff to address their outstanding concerns regarding sign regulations for the final proposal. Staff has made changes to that end and concurs with the Plan Commission's recommendation. Staff also recommends that the proposed ordinance be placed on the consent agenda. This is a zoning map of the R7 properties. There are 43 properties zoned R7 University Residential in Urbana. They're concentrated on the east and west sides of Lincoln Avenue between Illinois Street to the north and Florida to the south. This is a location map of the same properties. Eight of the properties are fraternity and sorority houses on the west side of Lincoln Avenue. That runs roughly down the middle of your screen here. Thirty-five of the properties are on the east side of Lincoln Avenue, 30 of which are in the Lincoln-Bucey corridor. This is a building types map. The legend shows apartments, boarding houses, Greek houses, surface parking lots, and religious institutions. Most of the properties have been or are being used as group homes, fraternities, or sororities, and are located close to the University of Illinois campus. However, the student demand for these types of housing is decreasing. It has been increasingly difficult for property owners to find tenants for many buildings in the district. The current zoning regulations have done a good job of preventing the buildings in the district from being torn down and replaced with new structures, but the same regulations make reuse and preservation of these buildings more difficult. That's the whole reason for this text amendment. They do not provide a path to preserve these important historic buildings, and we are trying to make changes to make reuse and preservation of these buildings easier. I've got a series of R7 photos. They're also included in your packet. This is a Greek house on the west side of Lincoln Avenue, so closer to campus. This is a Greek house on Lincoln Avenue, and then on the east side of Lincoln Avenue, so that would be in the West Urbana neighborhood. A rooming house, a religious institution, and this one was allowed by a special use permit. And then there are a few special cases throughout the R7 district. The Chateau, the Chateau Normand, which is an apartment building that was made possible through a planned unit development. And then the Europa House was recently rezoned, some of you may remember that, to R4. That was sometime last year. Greek houses and rooming houses are inherently different from each other and, as such, should be treated differently when making zoning changes. The proposed text amendment focuses on how to best allow Greek houses to be reused and preserved. Planning staff intends to follow up this text amendment with other zoning changes to directly address rooming houses in the district. The objective of the text amendment is to promote reuse and preservation of the existing buildings. Allowing for new uses in existing buildings could allow for some unique and creative adaptations of Greek houses in the future. The R7 district is currently limited to just six principal uses. To promote reuse of the buildings in the district, staff suggests that for existing buildings, the allowed uses be expanded. Through the text amendment, all residential uses would be permitted in existing buildings only, so not for new construction, only existing buildings in the R7 district. This would allow for existing buildings in the district to be converted into residential uses such as apartments. I've got a couple examples of commercial uses that have gone into existing buildings, both in Urbana and Champaign. This is the Twice is Nice, excuse me, Twice is Nice Thrift Shop. It's in the MOR district. This is the CU Potter's Club. I believe this is Zoned B1, which is the lowest-intensity commercial district, but it's also adjacent to residential districts. And then this is the Hopscotch Bakery in Champaign, and this is single-family zoning. Allowing some business uses could allow for creative reuse of buildings, of existing buildings, in ways that would benefit the residents of the neighborhood. At the April 7th meeting, the Plan Commission discussed two options proposed by staff to allow commercial uses in the R7 district. Option one would have allowed some commercial uses by right in the existing buildings on and west of Lincoln Avenue if they met certain criteria, and this addresses some of the public input that's been brought up. Option one would have distinguished between the east and west sides of Lincoln Avenue. However, the Plan Commission recommended option two, which would allow commercial uses in existing buildings only with a special use permit. The Plan Commission felt that option two, requiring a special use permit for commercial uses in existing buildings, would be the cleanest and best approach for the R7 district. All commercial uses would be handled on a case-by-case basis through the special use permit process, and parking specifically could be addressed through that process as well. This would require review by the Plan Commission and approval by the city council of any commercial use in the R7 district and give the public a chance to weigh in on the proposed use at both meetings. In general, staff proposes that commercial uses from the In general, staff proposes that commercial uses from the, these use categories be allowed in existing buildings with a special use permit. Public uses, personal service, food and sale, food sales and service, professional and financial services, and retail businesses. The font is smaller than I intended on this, but I'll just run through our general case timeline. Um, we started this process, I would say generally in November twenty twenty, but probably before that even. Um, it started with a survey of R seven property owners. Following that survey, we, um, had a plan commission study session in July of twenty twenty-one. And then we had several neighborhood meetings to engage, uh, the West Urbana neighborhood, um, residents, um, and get them involved in our planning process. So that started in around, uh, October twenty twenty-one, and went up through March of twenty twenty-two. In between there, we also had a historic preservation study session, we wanted to get the feedback of our historic preservation, uh, commission members. And we also had an online survey, um, I'll go over the general results from that survey tonight as well, uh, and they were also included in your packet. Um, and then April, we had two plan commission meetings, um, one on the seventh and one on the twenty-first. And then tonight, we are at committee of the whole with you all, um, that's our general timeline. Staff, uh, hosted four virtual neighborhood meetings, as I just talked about, um, on the proposed R seven changes. During the meetings, neighborhood residents expressed significant concern about parcel aggregation and out-of-scale development on these properties if the buildings were be, to be demolished and the sites were to be redeveloped. There was a general consensus that Greek houses and rooming houses should be treated differently. There was also a general consensus that residential uses such as apartments would be appropriate in existing buildings. There is some neighborhood concern, I'm sorry, some neighborhood support for by-right commercial uses in existing buildings. Uh, but some residents would like to have oversight and the opportunity to provide public input on the proposed, excuse me, proposed uses in these buildings by requiring a special use permit. So now I'll go through the neighborhood survey results. In addition to the neighborhood meetings, staff prepared an online survey. Postcards were mailed to residents within three hundred feet of an R seven property. The survey was also advertised on the city website and the R seven project page, as well as, uh, through a little bit of media coverage. We received about two hundred and fifty responses, and over half of the respondents lived in the West Urbana neighborhood. The survey asked people about what types of uses they thought would be compatible in existing Greek houses, how the new uses could be regulated, and what types of uses would be incompatible in the neighborhood. Possible restrictions included limited size, square footage, uh, limited hours, and, um, to only be allowed with approval from a board, commission, or city council. So I'll go through the survey results now. Um, the first question asked about the residential uses category, as you can see, there was, um, a majority of support, over ninety percent. Um, were in support of residential uses in existing buildings. We also received, um, pretty good support, over half, for, um, food sales and service uses by right in existing buildings, when then, with an additional twenty-seven percent of respondents being in favor of food sales and service uses, um, with some restrictions, whether that be on size, operating hours, or with approval from a board or commission. Uh, retail uses received some support, forty-four percent of respondents supported it by right, uh, an additional twenty-two percent, um, with some restrictions, and then thirty-four percent were against. Professional office uses, once again, about half of the respondents were in favor of them by right, when, with an additional twenty-eight percent of respondents being in favor with some restrictions. And then personal, uh, service uses, so this could include anything like barber shops, um, beauty shops, massage therapy businesses, things like that. About forty percent of respondents were in favor by right, an additional twenty percent with some restrictions. And then we pulled out some, uh, major qualitative results, um, or I'm sorry, some major themes from the qualitative results. Uh, so as we established, there was general agreement that residential uses were okay, but some people have different priorities, um, whether that be promoting single-family residential or mixed, um, you know, mixed-density residential apartments, things like that. Uh, commercial uses were somewhat polarizing, but more comments are generally in favor. Um, and then facilitating public space and community interaction within building uses was another, uh, theme that came up. There were some concerns about nuisances from potential uses, um, some thought that this would be a good opportunity for jobs and tax base in the community. And then there was also, um, support for neighborhood businesses as support for walkability and accessibility. Before I jump to that, based on the feedback we've received from the plan commission, historic preservation commission, and neighborhood public outreach, staff has drafted proposed zoning changes for the R seven district. Staff have narrowed down the list of allowable uses that we feel would make sense in existing buildings only and would complement the surrounding neighborhood. Here's what this map would look like, so, um, once again, text is a little bit smaller than I thought it would be. Uh, commercial uses would be allowed in these properties, so these are all of the R seven properties, with a special use permit only. Um, as I talked about earlier, when we brought the options to plan commission, option one distinguished between the east and west sides of Lincoln Avenue. This map considers all zoning, or all R seven zone properties, um, and allow, or would allow, uh, commercial uses in these existing buildings with a special use permit. So, to that point, uh, the text amendment would alter the allowed uses in the R seven district to allow residential uses in all buildings and allow businesses with a special use permit. The new uses would only be permitted in existing buildings in the R seven district, and commercial uses and residential uses such as apartments would not be permitted in any new construction. I'm gonna pull up our zoning description sheet just for, um, simplicity's sake. So this is something planning staff uses as a resource, um, to kind of simply explain what's allowed in the zoning districts. These would be the permitted uses in the R seven district, as you can see, only residential uses. Many of these are new to the R seven dis, or would be new to the R seven district, um, including things like, uh, multifamily residential lofts. Um, home for adjustment was not one that was originally included on this list, um, nursing home. And then special uses would include all, uh, commercial uses, so, public and quasi-public, that includes churches, um, and then the, the major business categories that we discussed. This is also included in your packet. A point of clarification as well, um, planned unit developments has been a hot topic, as it usually is. Planned unit developments, um, are permitted in any zoning district, that's not something that would be added to the R seven district as part of this text amendment. However, there are several requirements and restrictions that go along with planned unit developments. Uh, first and foremost would be lot size, the minimum lot size for a P U D is, uh, at least half an acre. So many of these R seven properties are not eligible, eligible for a planned unit development because of their size. And then just one last point on this sheet, the development regulations for the R seven district would not change as a result of this text amendment. Um, these are comparable to the R four zoning district now, um, and they would apply to all new construction. All right. Parking, uh, no additional parking would be required for new uses in existing buildings, that sounds scary. Um, additional parking would not be required for residential uses in existing buildings, because onsite parking would continue to serve residents of Greek houses if they converted to another residential use, and on-street parking would be available to residents through the city's finance department. Um, part of the rationale behind that is that Greek houses are designed to house a lot of, a lot of students. Um, lots of those buildings could house forty, fifty kids. Um, the parking onsite could serve the, the residence of, uh, converted Greek house, um, if it were converted into an apartment. And part of the rationale behind that is because if the building were internally renovated to include things like kitchens and bathrooms, and the units were divided up, the density of the building is going to ultimately be less than it would if it were housing, uh, Greek house, or I'm sorry, Greek students. So, um, that's part of our rationale for not requiring a, um, or not requiring additional parking for Greek houses converted into residential uses. That said, uh, parking for commercial uses in existing buildings would be addressed on a case-by-case basis through the special use permit process. So additional parking could be required as part of the special use permit, um, itself, depending on the need that the applicant felt they might need, or that the plan commission and/or city council felt that they might need. And then signs, um, for signs in the R seven district, staff originally proposed that they be regulated in the same way that signs in the M O R mixed-office residential district are regulated. Plan commission suggested that we reevaluate our approach to further restrict signs in the district. As proposed now, signs in the R seven district would be limited to freestanding signs, property sale and rental signs, and multifamily residential identification signs to ensure compatibility with the neighborhood. Freestanding signs and property sale and rental signs would be limited to a maximum area of ten square feet. Multifamily residential identification signs would be limited to a maximum area of twelve square feet. Uh, the R seven properties are shown on future land use maps eight and nine. The proposed, uh, text amendment aligns with goals one, twelve, sixteen, and seventeen of the comprehensive plan, and with the future land use designations of the West Urbana neighborhood and the Lincoln Bucie corridor. So this is map eight on the screen now, and map nine, the Lincoln Bucie corridor is cut between the two. Before we get there, allowing for new uses in existing buildings would encourage the reuse and preservation of the historically relevant buildings in the established neighborhood while precluding demolition and new development. Reuse of the existing buildings as something other than dormitories, fraternities, or sororities would also encourage a mix of land use types and help to promote walkability and accessibility in the neighborhood. Allowing new uses in existing buildings would promote investment in these older properties and contribute to their long-term potential. Uh, the city council has the following options in plan case twenty-four thirty-eight T twenty-two. Approve the text amendment as presented, approve with modified, um, or approve the text amendment as modified by specific suggested changes, or deny the text amendment. Uh, just a summary of the plan commission meetings, uh, plan commission held two public hearings for this case. They discussed two options for allowing commercial uses in the R seven district, and ultimately felt that requiring a special use permit for commercial uses in existing buildings would be the best approach. The plan commission also expressed some concerns about the proposed sign regulations for the district. Staff, staff has revised the text amendment language to address the plan commission's suggestions and concerns. On April twenty-first, uh, the plan commission voted unanimously to forward the proposed text amendment to city council with a recommendation of approval. Staff concurs with the recommendation and ask that the ordinance be placed on the consent agenda. I can take any questions you have for me now.
Any questions for Kat? Mary Alice?
Thanks Kat for the presentation, thank you Kevin and Kat for holding several neighborhood meetings, it's greatly appreciated. Um, I, you know, I, I wanna start off with saying, um, why not rezone these to something else? We're, we're talking about boarding houses and, and Greek houses. Um, I know that, uh, the Europa House was previously R seven, and, um, Chris Saunders asked for it to be zoned R four, and that flew through, right? It was, it was really easy, he had a neighborhood meeting, and there was no pushback and so forth. So I guess one of my main questions here is, you know, why, why shouldn't we do that process with these types of properties?
Yeah, I think that's a good question, and I will say that this, the Europa House was a special case. Um, that building was originally built as apartments, um, it was then converted into certified housing for the University of Illinois. And then once, um, it was no longer certified housing, Chris Saunders asked for it to be rezoned back to R four, so it could be reused as apartments. I don't think the same case could be made for lots of these properties, and I think the reason that we want to keep them zoned R seven and allow for new uses in existing buildings is so that we don't see them torn down and rebuilt to something new. The reason that a lot of these buildings are still there is because the R seven district doesn't allow for very many uses at all. There, like I said, there are only six principal uses allowed in the R seven district, and those are very limited to dormitories, fraternities, rooming houses, single-family houses, and there are a couple others. But really, there are residential uses that don't allow for very much density, they don't allow for, um, any real redevelopment of these properties to the point that they're at today. Um, lots of them are developed with historically significant buildings, um, and I think we would like to see the buildings, I know that we would like to see the buildings reused before we'd like to see the site redeveloped. And rezoning from R seven to something like R four opens the door for by-right apartment buildings where these Greek houses are now.
Okay, thank you, um, and then I'm, I'm wondering, I wanna go to the parking issue for a moment, 'cause I, I'm a little confused. Um, there, there's two parking items here, and that's on, uh, page five of the memo. So, under, uh, section eight-five, the amount of parking required, there's two possibilities. So no additional parking is required for new uses in existing buildings. So, how I read that is that if I have a special use permit and I decide to put up a barber shop, um, but I'm not changing the building except for the interior to make it a barber shop, I don't have any requirement for parking, is that correct? That's how I read that statement.
Yes, I would say that is true with qualifiers, um, you wanna take it?
Sorry, Kat. I, well, I kinda, I kinda wanna jump in, yes, so technically, there would be no parking required, but since we'd be requiring a special use permit, we could say in there, and five parking spaces are required as you show on your site plan. So there can be a condition that would tie, or that would require them to have parking, and that's the only way they're getting their special use permit.
Can a developer point to this particular thing and say, wait a second, your zoning amendment says I don't need any existing, I don't need any additional ones, even with new uses? That, that's the piece that, that trips me up with new uses. Um, I, I feel like if we wanna be clear to prospective owners, um, we should indicate that special uses will have to negotiate, will have to, based on the business type, will have to have some kind of parking regulations for that. Um, so, so that, that's number one in terms of parking. And then, well, I have a whole list of questions, but I'm gonna let other people ask questions too, so maybe they'll cover some of my questions, and I won't dominate the conversation, thank you.
Thanks, Mary Alice, okay, Grace?
Thank you, I definitely also have a few questions, I'll just start with the first few. And, okay, where to start, there's so many, um, 'cause I definitely appreciate all of the input from the public, and this is a big thing. Definitely appreciate the work from staff and the plan commission, watching that meeting was definitely helpful to understand this a little bit. Um, and so I had some kind of backtracking big-picture questions. Um, I didn't know if you had a sense in why there was the decline in Greek housing and, um, boarding housing, if you had any sense of, like, why that is?
I think there are lots of reasons, um, mostly I think kids are, you know, choosing to live in studio apartments, live by themselves, live in some sort of efficiency living space before they're choosing to live in group quarters. Um, that's something that was big, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, and it's on the decline as of late.
And I was wondering, uh, who owns these properties, like, in general, like, is it, uh, members of the public, or university partnerships? Like, who owns the Greek houses?
The university, to the best of my knowledge, does not know, own any of the R seven properties. Um, you get some panhellenic, national panhellenic, um, organizations that own the Greek houses, um, some are owned by local, uh, property managers, um, I think it differs.
But like, the Greek houses, the. But like the Greek houses, the fraternity or sorority would typically own the building? Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say in most cases, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I think those are my general questions. I'll wait for the others too. Thank you.
Jaya?
Thank you. Yeah, I would echo kind of what's already been shared. I know a lot of work has gone into this. There's just still a few questions. With the recognition that the rooming houses and the Greek houses are so different, is there a reason why? I know it says it's going to be addressed later, but I do think that that can contribute to some of the confusion that residents are talking about of if we're going to fix the problem, why not fix one problem at a time instead of saying, well, they're not the same, but we're going to include the rooming houses or whatever they're called, and then go back and fix it later? Why not just do one piece at a time since they're so different?
Yeah, I think, well, part of that is it's it's it would be hard to address that through a zoning text amendment. I think some of the rooming houses would probably make sense to rezone them to just like an R four and just rezone those, let people either turn them turn the existing buildings into apartment buildings or, you know, tear them down, put up new apartments or whatever fits in the R four district under the R four regulations. And so it's really it's really a matter of, we wanted to be very focused in this text amendment. Here's what we want to do. We want to preserve Greek houses because that, I don't think Kat mentioned it, but in twenty nineteen, Landmarks Illinois, which is a historic, ah, excuse me, historic preservation advocacy group in the state, listed Greek houses in Champaign-Urbana on their list of the ten most endangered buildings in the state. I think you see a lot more teardowns over in Champaign than you have in Urbana, partly because we have sort of the R seven, which is very restrictive, but at some point, those buildings need to be reused. So we wanted a text amendment that said, how do we best reuse those buildings? Also, another thing is that some of these buildings, I know at least one of the rooming houses used to be a Greek house. So the what we're proposing with this text amendment would probably fit fine for that. And this text amendment could actually fit fine for some of the other rooming houses as well. If somebody wanted to take a rooming house and in the existing building, put apartments in there, they could do that under this text amendment. So they might not even need to be rezoned. This might fit for, you know, for reusing those buildings. And one thing we've heard so many times from the neighborhood is that people care about the character of the neighborhood. And the existing buildings really add to the character of the neighborhood. So being allowed to reuse these buildings, whether it's a Greek house or a rooming house or whatever, that's really the the goal of this is to to keep those buildings that fit within the character of the neighborhood. And so that's our focus here. It could get really messy if you tried to sort of do many different things with one text amendment and it's probably not the right vehicle for that.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation and all the hard work. So what I'm remembering from the plan commission meeting that I attended and from everything I've read, is it true that every commercial proposal for these buildings would have to would require a special use permit? Is that correct?
Yes.
And I remember hearing that there would have to, the developer would have to have first a meeting with the neighborhood with the before it went to the plan commission, but correct me if I'm wrong.
That's a requirement for planned unit developments. However, a special use permit would be subject to a plan commission meeting, which is a public hearing.
Okay.
And then a city council meeting.
Okay.
I will add that that wouldn't preclude them from holding a public meeting. And, you know, if somebody were to propose, I don't know, if they wanted to put a pub in one of these buildings, you can imagine that the neighborhood might want to hear about it before it gets to plan commission, right? So we would strongly encourage, and that's part of our role as staff, is, you know, we can read the room. So we would encourage them to have a meeting with the neighbors to sort of help iron out those issues before it gets to plan commission. Because as you saw with the PUD text amendment, or one thing we talked about is there is if you have these open houses, it's a much better format to have these discussions. Because a plan commission meeting is like this. It's more formal. There's less back and forth. There's less conversation. So we would encourage that. It's not, it would not be required.
So it's a possibility, but not a requirement?
Yes.
Okay. One more question and then I'll let you guys chime in. Why is taverns and liquor stores on this? I just can't imagine something like that being in the neighborhood.
I'll take that one too. So we are beholden to what our table of uses calls things. So would I want a liquor store right next to my house? No. Would I be okay with a really nice wine shop in an old Greek house that's right next to my house? I might be okay with that. So or would I want a neighborhood pub that closes at, you know, ten PM and doesn't cause any more ruckus than the Greek house that used to be there? I might be okay with that. So the requirement that they have to get a special use permit would allow for something that could fit in with the neighborhood and be tastefully done, but we wouldn't just say, yes, it's allowed by right. And then you have a nightclub or a liquor store that's, you know, open till two AM and causing all sorts of trouble. So that's the thinking there.
Mary Alice?
So so going back for a moment, back to the first time that you came to plan commission, you gave them two options. Correct me if I'm wrong. So you had talked about the east versus west of Lincoln or the special use. And and I thought at that time, one of these suggestions was that there would be commercial uses by right and that there would be a separation between east and west. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. So what was?
It's not that we we it's not that they were saying, okay, we can do this with east and we can do this with west. It was kind of mixed in with some of the commercial uses by right.
Yeah, so the way that it was written was that some commercial uses would be allowed by right on the western half of Lincoln Avenue up to a certain size. I believe we suggested or writ wrote twenty-five hundred square feet. And then commercial uses that exceeded that size limitation, and I think there were also operating hours attached to that. If they exceeded the restrictions, then a special use permit would be required. For any commercial use on the east half of Lincoln Avenue, a special use permit would be required regardless. That's how option one was written.
Okay, all right. And then under permitted uses, since I was talking about parking, one one item on here which seems really could impact parking is a hotel or a motel, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, you can you can imagine a lot of people are going to be parking there overnight. And so if we have a parking with, you know, permitted uses that don't expand, I feel like that one needs to be moved because parking needs to be discussed in that type of use. So there's there's that. I have a lot of other suggestions, but I realize that we're not in the discussion portion yet of this. So I guess I would, if people have other, I think Chandra had a question, but then I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, before you make your motion, would you take the chair so that I can say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and then Chandra, I'll get right to you.
I'm going to recognize Shuri Sursi, sorry.
Okay, I guess my question is this because the one thing that I have known for decades is that there are plenty of also black fraternities and sororities on U of I's campus that I imagine would be very interested in being housed. If 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 is there any approach or has there been any hoarding of any of the sororities, the African-American sororities or fraternities regarding leasing or purchasing their national, purchasing maybe one of those houses for their sororors or frat brothers?
I think that would be a question for the people who own the properties.
Are there any covenants that would keep a black fraternity or sorority from actually owning those properties?
If they did exist, they wouldn't be legal.
They wouldn't be legal.
I'm going to play city attorney here.
No, because it depends on, of course, who owns the properties. For several decades in this in this town, black people weren't even allowed to be housed on campus, let alone even near it and in that area specifically. So that's why I'm asking. So is there a way that that the city could in fact court or or even bring that up as discussion? Or have any kind of inclination to talk to the leadership of some of these African-American sororities or frats? This may be a plus for them in the event that these houses become vacant or no longer are capable of, you know, paying their way, so to speak. Is that something that we would do as a city or as a plan commission or anything else?
I don't know if that really falls under our purview, but it's not it's not saying that we couldn't.
Well, it would definitely still be in in, I'm just thinking, it would still be within the the use that it's being used now. And these homes are, these these buildings are gorgeous. I don't want to see any, I have a respect for for that this this architecture and even the use that it's the way it's been used previously or up until now. So I would like to see another organization of sorts be able to also be able to take advantage of that kind of space if it all possible. So that's that's basically my question and something that I just thought we might want to think about as far as some type of of way to to encourage other organizations that may actually be interested in in those properties and when they become available.
Would you like your chair back?
I would love the chair back.
I relinquish the chair?
Thank you. Chandra?
Thank you Kat and Kevin for all the work that went into the memo and the presentation. So I have a couple of questions. On the issue of parking, that seems to be very prevalent. Were you able to like, I mean, I know it's probably difficult given time constraints, but were you able to observe parking in the neighborhood prior to making the decision to not require any changes in the parking?
That's a great question. Kevin might speak better to this as I was not an employee at the time, but a parking study was done back in twenty fifteen?
I think it was twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Sorry, I missed the question.
Go ahead.
I mentioned, were you able to observe parking in the neighborhoods prior to making the decision to not require any changes in the parking?
So, yeah, so back in in twenty eighteen, we did a study of, it was multifamily, so we didn't look at Greek houses. We were just looking at apartment buildings sort of in West Urbana and near campus. And we found there that there is, on balance, there is a lot of unused parking at apartment buildings near campus. So there are folks leasing, you know, leasing spaces out in their parking parking lots that are there because the zoning ordinance requires it, but they don't actually need, you know, need those spaces. Of course, individual lots, it was it was different. Some places were using a hundred percent of their parking. The majority were not. Like I said, we didn't observe Greek houses. We did also at the time look at on-street parking permits. And one thing I found was interesting is that some of the Greek houses had what I would think, and this isn't a technical term, but I think it's probably like an excessive amount of on-street parking permits that that they had. So you're talking twenty or thirty or forty for one for one Greek house. So, I mean, if we want to talk about parking problem, like on-street parking problems, that might be a good a good place to look is sort of maybe setting some sort of a limit for properties rather than requiring, you know, more more parking on-site. I think I diverged from your question, but just for a little background.
So so never any complaints or issues to your knowledge about parking at the Greek houses? So like you mentioned, there'd be like forty or fifty kids living in one house. Granted, I'm sure they all didn't have cars, but there was adequate parking for, was there a parking requirement for Greek houses? If there are housing that many?
No, we, our parking requirements came in well after, pretty much at most buildings in the whole neighborhood were built.
So it would be difficult to say if there would be sufficient parking if those place, if those, if the Greek houses turn into commercial uses?
Yeah, I think with commercial uses, again, it would be good because we could deal with it on a case by case basis through that special use permit process. But as Kat mentioned, for residential uses, the thinking really is if you're going to have less people than you've historically had living there on-site, why would we require you to put in more parking? And we did hear from from people during our outreach that they, a lot of people don't want to see these buildings not reused just because they don't meet the parking requirements. If you have a beautiful building, it doesn't make sense to say, well, you check all the other boxes, but we're going to force you to put in more parking and then you just can't reuse it.
Okay, thank you. And so you mentioned a survey of property owners? Did we talk about that and I missed it before?
No, not extensively.
Okay, so what was the overall consensus of the property owners? Like what they wanted to do and did they talk about like why they weren't using them as Greek houses anymore? What was their overall input?
So this was a very preliminary survey, something to get feedback from current property owners about whether or not the buildings were fully leased at the time. And granted, this was in twenty twenty, mid-pandemic. If they had plans for renovation, many of them did not. And that was really the extent of the survey. We weren't asking, you know, real thought-provoking questions about what their plans would be if we opened up the, you know, the table of uses or anything like that. We just wanted to get kind of a footing at where property owners were at with the properties as they stood in twenty twenty.
Because I would think like the motivation behind, you know, changing all of this would have come from the property owners saying that they need more uses out of their buildings. But if they haven't even requested anything, what sort of spurred this, I guess? I mean, I understand wanting to use existing buildings that are empty. Like, did, I mean, did you go to them and say, okay, we have ideas for you to use these buildings? It just doesn't seem like you've got enough information from the property owners. You may be making these changes and they still won't even do anything with them.
Well, I think some of some of them probably won't do anything with them. But it's it's to open up the options so that they could do something. Because not everything is going to change over immediately. Change always takes time. But really, no, as Kat mentioned, so the the whole point of the property owner survey was really to test whether this thing that we had been hearing for several years of, you know, it's harder to rent Greek or it's harder to fill Greek houses when they become vacant. The Chateau in Armand, which Kat showed in her photos, that was vacant for at least five years before somebody did a planned unit development and was able to reuse that. And it's fantastic. So sort of that project was kind of a proof of, like, here's what we want to do. Here's what could be done with these buildings. And the property owner survey was just really, is there any sort of need for this? And enough of the property owners indicated that there there would be, you know, some appetite or some need for for making some zoning changes. But the Europa House was was a key one. We were, they had contacted us back when, I think it was still certified housing and they were having issues because the university changed their certified housing program and was going to require them to do these crazy kitchen renovations and they just couldn't afford to do that. So initially, before Green Street Realty bought the property, the former owners were talking with us about, well, what could we even do here? And we said, well, we've been kicking around these zoning change change ideas for a little bit. But if you can't wait for us to go through that process, then you can just rezone. They didn't do it, Chris Saunders did with Green Street Realty. But that that survey, we didn't want to lead anybody too much either with that survey. We just wanted to see if there was any any reason for us to pursue this thing.
I have one more question if anyone else wants to. Go ahead, go ahead.
Jaya?
So it kind of related to that, do we have any sense for, if we're just talking about the Greek properties? Could I, I have to say, I found that last- The Greek properties that I I have to say I found that last answer to the differentiation between the Greek and the uh rooming houses a little confusing. Um, might like to come back to that, but? Are there vacant Greek houses? Are there a lot of vacant Greek houses right now? Do we have a sense for? Again, the need?
I would say some buildings are vacant. Um, I don't have a comprehensive list of what's vacant and what isn't at this point in time. Um, but we know that at for the buildings that are occupied, many of them are not fully leased and there are some that are entirely vacant.
Grace.
Thank you. Um, I so a few other questions, if we go back to the nightclub example, which, you know, might be more realistically a? Little local subdued pub or wine sale bar. Um, would in the special use permit process? Would is that when stipulations would come in like hours of operation? As well, I saw in the survey that was a big concern of people.
Yes, conditions can be applied to a special use permit um to address all all sorts of things. Parking is one that's been brought up, hours of operation is another. Um, those are all things that can be considered through that process.
Thank you, and then I was wondering, um? Do existing rules in other parts of ordinances require remodels to preserve some kind of historic character of the building?
If the building is a local landmark, um, the exterior needs to be preserved and any changes that the ex? To the exterior would require could require a certificate of appropriateness. Um, I believe for only national register properties, um, they have concerns about the interior. Um, yeah.
That that's correct, but national register has they have concerns about the interior, but that's only if you want to tap into certain tax credits. Um, national register doesn't actually offer any sort of protection. You could tear down a national register building tomorrow and? You know, and we wouldn't have anything to say about it. But so and I can't recall which ones of these are actually local landmarks.
There are a few, uh, the Royer House was recently designated a local landmark. Um, there's one sorority house on campus, I believe. I can't remember which one it is, it's on Nevada. Um, there are only a few that are local landmarks, though.
Yeah, I think that would be interesting to know which ones were um landmarks, because I guess the the practical question is, could someone say? We're gonna, you know, buy a Greek house and we're going to use the existing building? Because they keep like the bones of it, but change like the entire outside, would that be allowable under this?
Yeah, I mean, that would be that would be allowable now. Our our historic, even so, assuming one of these, if one of these were a local landmark, you can do whatever you want to the interior of a local landmark. As long as you're not touching the exterior. Um, that's our historic preservation ordinance, so? Um, we essentially just care about the the public face of of the building, so the neighborhood character aspect of it.
Just one thing to add to that, um, many of these properties, about three-quarters are in the Lincoln Bucy corridor. And there are Lincoln Bucy corridor design design guidelines that would apply to the building itself. Um, that's just something to note, um, that would apply to the exterior.
So do I mean, obviously, it seems like you don't think it's the best route since it's not in here, but um, I don't know your thoughts on making that part of this? If the idea is to promote using existing structures instead of tearing down? Um, of having some kind of stipulation in there of like an existing building means keeping? You know, some of the basics of the exterior in line with its current state. So like you're not taking a? Old, you know, white post building and just making it all modern on the outside and saying it's still the same building.
Yeah, so I think as as Kat pointed out, a lot of these are in the Lincoln Bucy corridor. Um, so there is there is some exterior. So anything done to the exterior would be subject to review. Um, but for ones that aren't in that corridor? I I think we'd have to, you know, if somebody was going to be just changing it completely so it was unrecognizable? I we wouldn't consider that to be reusing the building. Um, and that wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't fall under the regulations that we're proposing here.
And is that stated anywhere or that's the assumption in it?
I mean, that's just common sense, that's that's one reason you have professional staff to interpret the zoning ordinance. Um, I mean, we could try, you could try and parse things in in the zoning ordinance and? I it can get more complicated. My goal is usually to come up with the most basic regulations you can come up with to? Achieve the objectives you're you're trying to achieve.
I would also say that building permits are required for all sorts of work. Um, and we would, you know, have the authority to review that and see if the? Building itself were being changed um before before anything were allowed.
Yes, definitely uh makes sense. Um, another question was under the current policy, so aside from this just today? Um, is it allowable for someone to tear down an existing building in the R7? And then build a new one with? The residential uses that are allowed now, so like not apartments and stuff, is that correct?
Yes, and they would have to adhere to the development regulations, um, which I compared to the R4 zoning district. I will say many of those lots um could not be developed to the extent that they are developed now, so it wouldn't necessarily be financially? Smart.
Um, and then I was wondering about some of the uses here, it seems like in the commission there was talks about the? Um, allowable uses and that there's kind of a balance of them being broad enough to be encompassing and also specific enough. Um, and so I was wondering if there was something like, one of the ones that I, you know, keeley don't see here would be something like a yoga studio or something like that. Um, and so was it my correct understanding that you think that that is? A task for a next project beyond this is going through what the actual uses are and how they're categorized?
No, I think that's a a great point to bring up, um, and? You kind of got at the issue of the table of uses. Lots of them are very broad and lots of them are very specific. So um, when we? Know that a building or that a use is going to go into an existing building, our job as staff is to determine what the use is as it is in the table of uses. So um, you know, public spaces and yoga studios and things like that have been brought up throughout this process. Um, and I'm not sure, I don't have my report in front of me, but fitting that into the table of uses um is part of our job. Um, and I think we've, you know? Made a conscious effort to incorporate things like that into the R7 table of uses for existing buildings because that's stuff that the neighborhood would like to see. Um, so like I said, I don't have it in front of me now, but I I believe that would be allowed through? Something.
I think I think we'd probably want to add that back because I probably consider that like a health club or fitness? Use and right now, I think we took that out because people? Or because we had heard uh? Folks not wanting something like a a big, you know, health club or something, but? We could throw that back on there as a special use in an existing building. So I'm not seeing another use that that would really fit under.
And my last question was, um, the way I'm seeing it too, there's kind of um two parts of this, well, lots of parts, but one way to split it would be the residential? Uses that we're allowing and then the commercial uses that we're allowing. Um, and it seems like the residential one has? Very little controversy, that one seems much more straightforward, has supported the public, it makes sense. Um, and it's the commercial one that has a little bit more concerns or things to figure out still. Is there, um, you know, just think about for what to do tonight? Is there any? Way it would or wouldn't work for separating out those two, like even reading this logistically, if there's like any way to separate that out in the resolution? Or for you, are they all there's definitely go together?
Well, I think the the point to be made is that residential uses would be permitted by right in existing buildings, so that's something that wouldn't require a special use permit. The special use permit is kind of the tool we're using to distinguish between the two and allow for some oversight over the commercial uses. So that's kind of how they're split in the language as it's written. Commercial uses would require a special use permit, which is that added degree of oversight.
Yeah, I guess my question is if it would be possible to pass like the residential uses by right tonight? And keep the commercial uses in committee of the whole, or the way it's written, it seems like they're all entertain intertwined in the text amendments, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, they're all intertwined and that would require a separate case if we wanted to revisit commercial uses later. Um, that's not really something I'd be in favor of because I think? I I don't think we're that far from, like, I'm not hearing tonight and I haven't, I didn't hear at Plan Commission anything that was suggesting? Where? There are a a really large amount of of significant concerns that need to be ironed out, but maybe I'm reading things wrong. But yes, they could be separated out, but then we'd have to do the whole noticing, go through Plan Commission for just the commercial uses? And then come back to you in a couple of months.
So it would be, would it be possible for this case to go for residential uses by right? Tonight without the commercial or is there not a way to separate them tonight?
Yeah, I mean, you can just strike through all the commercial stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice.
All right, so I have my final three questions before? I want to make a motion if other people don't have it. Um, so my my first question, I was I was talking to Kevin here real quickly, uh, I think one of the public mentioned condos? But I can't find that anywhere, there's a lot of, I have a lot of printings and dwelling units and so forth. Um, condos, I I don't believe any of this language that's used in by right can be a condo, is that correct?
I I think they could be, I mean, condo is just an owners ownership structure. Um, I think you could condoize.
Dwelling multifamily?
Yeah, you could condoize an apartment building and, I mean, they have those in in West Urbana. Right now, they're legally non-conforming, I think, but.
Uh, Kevin, I also think it could be done through a multiple-unit common lot line.
That's what Mary Alice was asking me about. I mean, it could be, sorry, I thought you meant it does this mean condos, not not could this include condos, my mistake.
That's just a funny term in general.
Um, and then my? My second question, I don't know if it really um belongs here, but there was an interesting idea that? There, you know, would you mind pulling up the location of the R7? In my opinion, there's clearly three zones here. We've got west of Lincoln, we've got the Lincoln Bucy corridor, and then we have outside of Lincoln Bucy corridor. So I just want to take a moment and talk about the uh the? East, sorry, east of Lincoln Bucy corridor. You know, they've got one, two, three, four, five properties there. That is clearly a residential area, clearly. Um, and even if you tore it down and built an apartment building, it would be not appropriate. Um, so I think one of the suggestions was to revert back if the building was uh torn down, that it would revert back to kind of the zoning of the area. I don't know how that's accomplished.
I don't either.
Okay, all right, so I it sounds to me like there may or may not be a legal way of doing that.
Oh, I I think there's probably usually a legal way to do anything, but is it? Is it going to be worth the the effort to? You know, to come up with that language and spend more, you know, spend a lot more time trying to do that? For a handful of properties where, you know, as we proposed it, if somebody proposes a any commercial use there, they've got to get a special use permit. And if it doesn't fit in the neighborhood, tells them that it's it's not going to fly.
Okay, and then my my third question um has to do with um? Building upon what Grace was talking about. Currently in this amendment, the starred items on the build by right um reads? Permitted only in buildings that were constructed on or before the date of the ordinance. Okay, so um? That, I guess what I'm trying to figure out here is the purpose of this? Is to maintain the outside structures as they are now? That that's what I've heard throughout everything, that's the purpose. So but that that's not reflected in these notes.
That's a that's a case of just easy zoning administration? Because if it's before a given date? We know just looking at a building? If it if it was built before that date. Um, I mean, we could just as easily say like 1980? Or because nothing, I think aside from the neighbor house, I don't think anything new? Has been built in the R7 district since? The 30s or 40s, maybe?
So so what I'm trying to get at is 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 maintaining the outside structure of the place so that the buildings um are? Are stay the way they look right now, for lack of a better phrasing. Um, so if that's the case, then permitted um only in buildings? That maintain the exterior and were constructed? You see where I'm going here, like we have nothing in here that says we want them to maintain the exterior.
Yeah, and and I'm fine with, or I think that's that is a good suggestion, I'm all for clarifying language if if it makes things easier. So if you have some suggestions for that, I think we're we're amenable to it.
Okay, all right, um, oh, sorry.
Um, let me get to Chris first and then you.
Um, yeah, I want to piggyback a question that Chandra asked and I apologize if I'm asking the same thing, but? I want to address the elephant not in the room. And that is, do we have developers lined up that want to convert these buildings?
I don't think so, but I mean, some some people.
This isn't being driven by developer demand.
No, this this is being driven, and I just want to clarify because I think people have been saying, you know, saying that this whole thing is is driven because we want to help developers out. This whole thing is driven because we want to preserve these historic Greek houses.
Okay.
Um, that's what started everything, and if in the process some developers get helped out? And, you know, build reuse a building and now it's economically viable and giving us tax dollars for the next several decades? Great, I mean, that's kind of what we want to see.
Okay, so why are why aren't we differentiating between boarding houses and Greek houses? Why 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 haven't we separated those two?
Yeah, because I.
You might have already answered that.
Well, no, I think it's kind of, it's it's kind of hard to do that because if you just if you just say we're going to treat boarding and rooming houses this one way? Well, there happen to be some that used to be Greek houses, so? So that's not a good way to parse it out. And it would it would take some time to go through? On a a case-by-case basis and look at every rooming house in the context of this text amendment. But I think as Kat mentioned earlier? We can come back? And that's kind of our plan is to come back and look at the boarding and rooming houses, I think there's there's 17 of them, I believe. So that in a separate case, in a separate um? Effort, we could look at them and say, okay, well, what makes the most sense for these? Some of them, it might make sense to stay R7 and use the rules that we're presenting tonight. Others, it might make sense if the building's just really unreusable. They could just probably rezone to R4, which would have the same development regulations as R7. But that would give them the option to? Replace a building with an apartment building? That meets those development regulations, so it'd still need to be, you know, in? Character somewhat of of the neighborhood.
Jay.
I think you just answered the question and I was I was going to follow up on that that differentiation, so thank you.
Do you want me to take the chair, Sharice?
Would you please take the chair, Mary Alice?
Yes, I will take the chair, the chair recognizes Sharice.
Thank you very much, I would very much like to understand the difference? Between boarding house, because a lot of people that that came up and spoke tonight and input and everything? The difference between boarding house? And Greek, I know what a Greek sorority house is, but just the difference as far as definition? Uh, is it area, is it the way it's parsed out? The other thing I, and because I've never lived in this area or up around here, although I did go to Lille School? Um, I do not understand the difference between? East uh Lincoln, what's east of Lincoln and what's west of Lincoln and why that means so much? So if someone could explain that to me, I'd really appreciate it.
I'll answer question two first because it's easier. Uh, the properties west of Lincoln are are really located on the University of Illinois campus. And the properties east of Lincoln Avenue are where you start to get more into the neighborhood. Um, as I showed, I think in a few photos? There are properties on Lincoln Avenue that behave differently than properties deeper into the neighborhood, deeper west. Um, as Mary Alice mentioned, the five properties or so that are even east of the Bucy um Avenue line. So that's the short answer to that. Um? Repeat question one?
The the other question was the um? The the definitions or the distinctions between what makes a boarding house and what what? What makes? a boarding house and what makes that different from a sorority or fraternity house?
Sure. So boarding and rooming houses are capped by the zoning ordinance at a certain number of occupants, I believe it's fifteen occupants. They are different from an apartment building because they have a communal kitchen and communal living space. Dormitories, as fraternities and sororities fit under the dormitories definition in the zoning ordinance, which means that they have to provide food service in some capacity on a daily basis for the people that live there. So while they, you know, behave similarly inside, they have communal living spaces, they have communal kitchens, and they have separate bedrooms, they have to provide food for the people that live there, which differentiates the two.
So the main difference between the boarding house and the sorority house is that the sorority house, like a dorm, has to provide a certain amount of meals, like breakfast and lunch, or breakfast and dinner, for the occupants of the sorority house, whereas a boarding house, you can go in and make your own breakfast, lunch, or dinner.
Exactly.
Okay, but it's still a communal space. Question, with a Greek house, are the occupants ever allowed to go in the kitchen and make anything for themselves, or do they have to keep the little hot plate up in their room, or?
I've never lived in one, so I couldn't answer that.
Who knows, because I, who knows, sorority?
Yeah, Nick's coming in to talk about, he's going to give his PSA about no hot plates in your room.
Okay, because I really, yeah, I want to understand that.
Okay, so from, this is actually the private certified housing for U of I. Two or three years ago, they actually implemented where you had to have meal service for your residents, and that's where Europa House did not have a kitchen. And so they looked at several options to build out a kitchen, and finally, they're like, it's not valuable for us. So they basically had to pull from certified housing because they didn't have a commercial kitchen that they could prepare meals. So from a building side standpoint, they're the same. I look at it the same whether, you know, it is a Greek house or a rooming house. It's more of how the zoning looks at that and determines, okay, well, they're preparing meals here for the whole group, so we're going to call this a Greek house. From a building safety standpoint, they're the same. So from a number standpoint, they're going to be calculated the same. It's based off of the space available. So really, there's not a lot of, you know, differentiation between the two of those, other than the terminologies that we're using to call them as such. You know, over the years, I think online education's been a big reason we've seen decline, because, again, from the contract we have with the U of I to do the private certified housing, we have seen that number go down, one or two houses a year. So seven years ago, when I started, we did twenty-four-ish, off the top of my head, sororities or fraternities that were certified through the U of I. Now we're down to sixteen or seventeen. So they've seen a drastic decline. There are several of them that have tried to reuse, another sorority moved in and have since disbanded in the last two or three, I mean, they didn't last a year or two. Some of them have, have, you know, been reused by other sororities that have moved over. The other thing to keep in mind, too, is not all your sororities and fraternities are sanctioned by the U of I. There's a large number of them that are sororities and fraternities that are not sanctioned by the U of I, but they still exist.
Okay, one more question, and then I'll take my chair back. So I guess this question is, my question is this, with sororities and fraternities that may be occupying some of these gorgeous spaces, do you also, would you also think or say, when did, I guess what I want to know is, when and maybe why did the University of Illinois, all of a sudden, or was it all of a sudden, decide that the certification, you had to have a certified kitchen space, or whatever it was, that, because that seems to have been also something that has, seems to have interfered with that, where you had people, you know, you said Europa House couldn't meet the certification, they changed the certification, basically. So when did that happen?
It's been within the last two or three years. I don't have a date off the top of my head, but there's, they have options, so they, and I don't know, again, that, because that's certified housing, that has nothing to do with us, but I know that that is the reason that Europa House basically had to leave certified housing, because they couldn't meet that qualification, because like was mentioned earlier, they were built as apartment and not with a common kitchen. So, and that was something that certified housing did all on their own. And I think a lot of that had to do with the fact that, you know, these kids are, you know, going there, and certified housing, basically what makes it a certified house is that kids can go there as a freshman. So it's treated very much like a dormitory that's on the U of I. So I think part of that is, you know, parents expect them to have meals and not be going out to eat, not, you know, having to struggle to get to the grocery store and that sort of thing. So again, I don't know, I can look into that, but I don't have the exact reason why the...
No, I was just wondering if there was some kind of correlation between the U of I deciding to decertify certain occupancy standards, and they'd never done it before, and this now seems to be a problem, and they're not making, they're not making that housing certified housing anymore, and if that might be based more on them having so much apartments and managing and so on and so forth, you know, it's kind of like a competition thing with, I'm just saying.
Europa House is the only one that I'm aware of. The Europa House and the law office, which were basically owned by the same people, that's the only one that I know of that did not, you know, find a way to comply with that requirement. Some of the other ones, like I said, have just, you know, declined in enrollment to the point that it wasn't feasible.
Okay, right.
Can I jump in real quick? I don't think we quite answered your first question, where you asked what the difference is. So we sort of said from like a use perspective, but, I mean, your typical rooming house, because it's capped at fifteen people, is smaller than, you know, than a Greek house. And the Greek houses were purpose-built by sororities and fraternities to be these just architectural gems to house, you know, thirty, forty, fifty people way back in the day. So they, typically, they have pretty different sort of physical characteristics. You could go buy many rooming houses, and you wouldn't even know them as being different than just your, just a house that's rented out.
Okay, and a rooming house can also have like a small kitchen and a single, it can be like parsed out to look like a single apartment, though, too, can it?
I don't know, I suppose. Nick, you're the building guy.
There's several of them that if you drove by, you would not know, you know, how many residents are in there, right? They just look like a big, two-story, you know...
Right.
Old house, where, again, they have, you know, again, what makes them a rooming house is they don't have individual kitchens. You know, it's one kitchen, one commons area, and basically, you're renting that bedroom, you know, and then you share the rest of the common space. You know, a lot of times, you share a bathroom, you share the kitchen, you share dining area, you share living room.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Well, you got to give me back the chair.
Okay, I'll give you back the chair for the thing. Can I make a motion?
Now you may make a motion, Mary Alice.
All right. I would like to move to keep in committee ordinance number 2022-05015, and ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance R7, university residential text amendment, Plan Case 2438-T22.
Second.
All right, it has been moved by Mary Alice to keep this particular ordinance in committee, seconded by Chris. Is there any discussion? Jaya.
I just wanted to say again, like, how much I appreciate the staff's work on this. I know that it has been a lot to get all that community input. I know that, you know, Kat was really responsive, one of the times where we talked about a conflict with spring break, and so just really to acknowledge that, I know this has been a long process, and I appreciate all the time you're spending answering our questions. We've heard from a lot of residents about, you know, about this potential change, and so I think it's important that we are diligent and take this time. Also heard from residents who do want that flexibility, right? So just finding the right balance, we're, you know, we're meeting everybody's needs as best we can, but I do also appreciate that focus on preservation of these historic buildings, but overall, just wanted to say thank you, you know, all of you who've been working on this for so long.
Okay, Chris.
Yeah, Kat and Kevin, you've worked hard, and I think you've tried very hard to incorporate the citizens' concerns and their feedback. But I will tell you, over the last couple weeks, you've kicked a hornet's nest, and a lot of residents are either misunderstanding what you're doing or don't like what you're doing. And so the reason why I want to kick this back to, and by the way, the West Urbana neighborhood is not on fire, there's not a line of developers, you know, trying to get into these Greek houses, so we've got time, and I suggest we take our time and get community buy-in to however we're going to save these Greek houses. They are beautiful, but they're also old, and for a developer to make the investment of complying with all the new code, all the ADA requirements, it's an enormous financial investment to convert these buildings to reuse, and you guys know that. So I just, you know, I know it's, you know, you've been on this since 2020, and, but I think there's just far too many residents who don't understand and don't like what you're doing, and I think, I mean, a lot of the emails I got still think that commercial uses by right, and, you know, that's not at all what you're trying to do. So there's a lot of miscommunication, and I just encourage you to stay with it and get, you know, take some more time to get community buy-in.
Mary Alice.
Kat, would you mind pulling up the Lincoln-BUC corridor photo for a moment? Or the zoning one that shows that? Oops, let's not check for updates. I just want to give some people who maybe aren't as familiar with it, a little bit of the historical context of what's going on here. So some people have asked, well, what's the difference between east and west? Well, if you look at our planning documents and you listen to our residents, there is a big difference between east and west. And that difference, that dividing line is Lincoln Avenue. And what that means, in fact, in the master plan of the university, their dividing line is Lincoln Avenue. And it is also the west blockface of Lincoln Avenue. The university has no desire to move into the east side of Lincoln. They don't have any desire. And so for obvious reasons, hopefully, people can understand why this dividing line is here, understand that this is really the last walkable neighborhood that you can live in, in Champaign and Urbana, and raise a family that's in a single-family home, a duplex, and attend the university or work at the university. So there's reason for concern, and part of that concern had to do with the Lincoln-BUC corridor. And so, you know, Lincoln-BUC corridor is bounded by Illinois Street, so the south side of Illinois Street, the north side of Pennsylvania, and then Bucy and Lincoln east side. So that's the Lincoln-BUC corridor, and obviously, we have, I think, I wrote it down, was it forty, thirty, thirty out of forty-seven? That's a lot of properties. Whatever we do will impact the Lincoln-BUC corridor. So I feel like we have to be very cautious in terms of what we do, and rather than doing too much, maybe we should take the strategy of doing maybe a little bit too little, because we don't know the unintended consequences. And it's been made clear in multiple entities and multiple community conversations that there is this dividing line, that this needs to be maintained between the residential uses and the university and commercial uses. And as further background in terms of the Lincoln-BUC corridor, the intent was to have higher-density uses on the blockface of the east side, stepping it all the way down until we get to Bucy, and then everything on the east side of Bucy, so that dotted line on your right-hand side there, that was all going to be residential. That was all going to be single-family residential. So that was the plan for Lincoln-BUC corridor, and obviously, we have, we have a lot of properties on the east side, which is why there's probably a higher density, but then we have a whole bunch of things, and guess what? They're the boarding houses. Why are they the boarding houses? They're the boarding houses because a long time ago, people decided to convert single-family houses into boarding houses. Some people bought them and decided, okay, well, I'm going to rent out eight bedrooms, you know, whatever. So my strategy here, and the reason I want to keep it in committee, is because I feel like I have a number of suggestions that I would love to have a discussion about, since this is on the table right now, and, but my primary goal here is to, let's be careful, let's be cautious, and let's do something purposefully, so we don't disrupt the whole plan that we have for west of Lincoln, the Lincoln-BUC corridor, and east of Lincoln. That's my purpose. And so with that in mind, I would like to suggest that all of these new permitted uses, so those are the ones with the stars on our list, only apply to fraternities and sororities. Now, I understand that there's difficulty defining what that is, but that's why I'm keeping it in committee. The boarding houses, in my opinion, have to be treated differently, and this is the way to do that. We can address the boarding houses later. This then specifically only addresses the fraternities and sororities. My second ask for discussion is that people have brought up the taverns, for example. I mean, they're, building a tavern on Ohio Street in the 700 block is just not going to fly, right? It's not going to fly. So why get the neighborhood upset? Why get the developers' hopes up that they can build a bar in the 700 block of Ohio? Now, granted, I think the staff would tell them it's not going to fly, but let's be a little clear here. And so I noticed that in the Table 6 notes here, you have two asterisks, and I actually think it's redundant, and this is why I think it's redundant. So under special use, so the two-star asterisk says, permitted in buildings that were constructed on or before blah date if a special use permit is granted. So that means that new buildings, maybe it's not erroneous, but, okay, so that means that new buildings, if somebody tore it down today, and they wanted to build something, they wouldn't be able to use these special uses. Is that right? Is that the purpose of those asterisks? So I just want to add in another asterisk, which is basically dividing up east and west Lincoln and saying, these are only permitted in west Lincoln. Just divide up those commercial uses. That addresses a little bit of what Grace is talking about. That addresses a lot of what the community is talking about, and it's clear. It's clear to homeowners, to developers, what is allowed and what isn't allowed, and hopefully saves people a lot of time, planning staff, neighbors, developers. So let's make this clear. So those are my suggestions on ways that we can tweak this.
Grace.
Thank you. So again, definitely see the importance of this and appreciate all the input from everyone and work from staff and the commissions. I could definitely see this going best and worst-case scenarios. I mean, I can see the vision of keeping the historic buildings and people having a florist or a yoga studio or a bakery or café that they could, you know, walk past and stop by on their way to campus. So, I mean, I can definitely see the best-case scenarios and what the potentials are. I can also see people expressing, you know, some of the worst-case scenarios, that it might be noisy and have more parking issues. So I definitely, I see both of those. I support mixed, you know, diverse-use walkable spaces, and also, you know, want to consider the livability for the residents who are there. I'm definitely glad that we're keeping this in committee. That was, I would definitely appreciate more time with this, especially since it has been a bit of a lengthy process already, and I think that it is really important, especially looking at future implications, like decades later, we're going to have new staff, new council, new residents, new developers, and I think that it is wise to get things in writing now, if that is the intent. If this is the intent, I definitely understand the simplicity, it might be easier to operate that way, but I think that if we're going in with a clear intent... in with a clear intention of something now, let's just put it in writing, so that decades later, when someone's wondering this, it's not vague and just up to interpretation, if we do mean it to be intentional now. I think that the special use permit process is a good idea for the commercial ones. I think that's a reasonable kind of route, where the public can still be involved in the process, and it's not by right blanket for everyone for those uses. What I hear, some concerns too, from the public, is that, you know, while it is more work for staff and planning commissions to go through more of those permits, it's also more use for residents to have to kind of be on the lookout, and, you know, speak up for every proposal. So, just explaining that I see all the things here, and I'm glad that we have more time to work on this. I think for a few specific things, I didn't quite understand Mary Alice's last one, so I'm excited we can have more discussion on this. But if we're throwing out specifics, I think other ones we mentioned was in parking under Section 8.5, adding maybe something like, no additional parking is required for new uses in existing buildings, unless deemed necessary under special use permit. I mean, I think that's a pretty straightforward one, just to make sure that 50 years from now, nobody quotes that as a reason why they don't have to. And then also, maybe a bit about, you know, these uses allowed under special permit, or residential by right for buildings built before this date the ordinance passes, that maintain the historic character of the exterior of the building, or something like that, again, if that is the intention. And again, I appreciate that we have more time to talk about this. And if any more of the public have input, we definitely still appreciate hearing it. And I think Chris also brought up a great point, too, that there's a big communication piece, too, that I think that some of the residents, you know, their concerns might already be addressed in some way, but that message isn't getting across. So I think it's important that we, like Chris says, kind of have the community buy-in and support a little bit more in this process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Grace. And Shandra.
Okay, so, this has been a long discussion. But, yes, I'm glad we're keeping this in committee. We talked about a lot here, and I think there's still a lot to be discussed and questions answered. We did receive a lot of emails opposing this. We got public input. But I'm also looking at this survey. Like, there were, you know, over 200 responses, and many of them wanting to see some innovation, and some differences in the usage of these R7 vacant properties, essentially. And so, the survey performed by Kat and company indicated there's significant support for more inclusionary zoning. And there's definitely been a shift and a trend toward making neighborhoods a mix of uses, from multifamily rentals, duplexes, even fourplexes. We have an affordable housing shortage. Boarding houses and duplex could address that gap. I've read through this, even the qualitative data of the survey, and there's some really good uses for these old buildings. If nothing is done, and then they continue to remain empty, and/or underutilized, and deteriorate, I don't think the neighborhood wants that either. I want to ensure that the character of the neighborhood is maintained, while giving the options for innovation, and more accessibility in walkable neighborhoods. I mean, I know I'm not the only HDTV fan, but like, when you see people looking for homes, they're like, oh, it's in a cute little neighborhood, where we can walk to the coffee shop, we can walk. We want Urbana to be like that as well. So, I think there's, as Chris said, there's a lot that maybe, may have been miscommunicated or misunderstood. So I think that there's a lot more room to make some clarification. So, thank you.
All right, do we all have the discussion done now? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
This is my motion to keep it in committee.
Yeah, your motion to keep it in committee.
All right, I'm just double-checking.
Double-check.
We're still there, the motion to keep it in committee.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colicetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Okay, so, that will be kept in committee. The next order of business, thank you, Kat, and Kevin, and Nick, Nick? Appreciate, I do appreciate all the information. Nick Hanson, all the work that you've done. Next, we have an ordinance amending, ordinance number 20, sorry, ordinance number 2022-05-016, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 5, Building, Fire, and Flood Safety Codes, merging Building Safety Code, Board of Appeals, and Property Maintenance Structures Code, Board of Appeals, and, is this you?
It's me.
All right.
All right. So, basically, we are looking to combine the Building Safety Board of Appeals, which oversees appeals for all of the codes that we adopt as a city, except for the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals, which then oversees the Property Maintenance Code. So, currently, half of the staff, excuse me, half of the board commissioners serve on each board, or serve on both boards. So basically, we're splitting board members between the two boards. So, with the upcoming adoption of the 2021 code, we're looking to merge those boards together, just to help simplify and move things along. In the seven years that I've been with the city, we have not had any appeals. So that's, they're very, you know, under, I don't want to say underutilized, but we don't utilize them a lot. Typically, we go with the approach of working with the property owners and the architects to achieve, you know, the codes that we need. So, I can answer any questions you have.
Mary Alice.
Thanks, Nick. So both of the boards that you're proposing we merge are appeals boards?
Correct.
So they serve the same function?
Exact same.
Exact same thing. The only difference is, one is with maintenance, and then I'm assuming, what, so what's the difference between maintenance and building safety?
So, the current Building Safety Code Board of Appeals oversees the building code, the residential code, the fire code, the electrical code, and all that. So basically, when you get to the property maintenance, that's for existing buildings. So that's basically, you know, your, so that's for something, again, a house that was built 20 years ago, is no longer going to fit under our current adopted residential code. So they would fall under the property maintenance code, which basically says, there's a lot of caveats in that, which refer back to if it was built in compliance, you know, then. So...
So, okay, I didn't realize that you could appeal a building code. So if you come out to my property, and you say, I need to, whatever, add two steps to my thing, and I could go to a board and say, no, I don't think I should add two steps.
You can, but really, it also says right in the code that the board can't, you know, basically, the board's more for the interpretation side of things, right? Those gray areas, where I may say, hey, you need to do this, you know, because that's the way I interpret it. But, you know, an architect could challenge that and say, well, I don't think that that's how it's meant to be interpreted. So, the code is very clear that you cannot, you know, the board can't go against the code. So if it's black and white, they can't be like, oh, well, you know, your rise and run are incorrect, so, but we're going to let you slide.
So it's interpretation of the code?
Right. It is the main objective.
Okay. All right. So then, my next question, so, okay, you had referenced the fact that we have older structures that, you know, had different codes at the time, because codes change and so forth. So the Building Safety Code is for new buildings?
So basically, the Building Safety Code is for, basically, your building code, your residential code, which all apply to current buildings. So, once you adopt the next code, obviously, those codes are technically, you know, those buildings are going to be out of code compliance, per se, right? Because they're not going to be, just like ADA, right? You don't have to comply with the current ADA until you start remodeling a building. And then also, now you've got to spend, you know, depending on the caveats, you've got to spend the money to bring it up to, you know, the ADA code. Or, you know, for example, like...
Okay. So what you're telling me is, is building brand-new construction, or repairing, or adding on to existing construction? That's what I'm hearing from you. Is that right?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get broad categories here, because it, to me, it determines whether or not, why do we combine these? And so, I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So, over the years, since 2009, which this is the current code we're under, they actually broke out existing buildings from, now is its own separate code, which we will look to adopt here as we move forward with the 2021 codes. But previous, it was just a small section. But obviously, again, as we progress, year after year, and codes are revised, you know, every three years, by the International Code Council, they're constantly changing, right? So the Property Maintenance Code is a book that's about that thick, maybe 75, 80 pages. You get into the residential code, the building code, we're talking, you know, 400, 500 pages. Because again, they don't focus in on all the nitty-gritty stuff. They're focusing on, excuse me, mostly life safety stuff. You know, the big-ticket items, the things that are going to make a difference. You know, we're talking about, you know, passive egress. We're talking about, you know, the condition of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Grace.
Thank you. Thanks for the info on this. I was wondering if you knew why they were separate boards in the first place, and any, like, background if they did have more appeals, or more seats filled historically?
So, I mean, in years past, I think, it's been a number of years ago before, since either board has actually heard an appeal. When I first started with the city in 2015, I actually went through and created a spreadsheet of basically, all the code cases that we had completed, you know, and what they were, you know, a result of. Most of them were back from the 60s, 70s, and a lot of those had to do with buildings that were converted before we adopted codes, right? So, you know, they were changed, and maybe, again, that single-family house was turned into a rooming house, or that single-family house was turned into an apartment building, you know, with a number of different rooms. And all of a sudden, you know, an inspector goes in there and says, whoa, what happened here? I mean, we still find places that were like, you know, we have to go back and research and be like, okay, how long has this been that way? You know, and you go back to a property maintenance file, and some of them is, you know, you look back, and you're like, oh, well, they surveyed the neighbors, and, you know, Mrs. Smith lived here since, you know, 1940, and it's been that way as long as she could remember. You know, or there's photo, or there's copies of, you know, like, address, you know, from the mail service, you know, indicating that it was multiple units. You know, again, you know, before we had adopted codes, you know, people would just, you know, basically be like, oh, I want to convert this, I want to build this. And so, it would happen, and there really wasn't a lot of oversight. And so, you know, that's where, again, like I said, that's where the property maintenance kind of really focuses in on the major, important life safety things, whereas the building code and stuff is the broader, and more specifics.
Okay, thank you. And then, in the resolution here, it's saying that, in the City Code, Chapter 5, we're amending to replace references to the Property Maintenance Structures Code, Board of Appeals, to the Building Safety Code of Appeals. So does that mean that the one, I understand we're merging the two, but the one that remains is the Building Safety Code of Appeals?
Correct. Because, like I mentioned before, that one already see as oversight over all of our codes, except for the property maintenance. So, we thought it was a smoother transition, just to basically take that final code and merge it with the rest of them.
Awesome. And then, just one last clarifying question. Just that, is it correct that there will be no decrease of services? Anything that would have gone to the Maintenance Structures Code Board now just goes to Building Safety Code?
Correct. As we adopt the 2021, that'll be one of the amendments that we include, instead of, where it talks about your right to appeal, instead of appealing to the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals, you will appeal to the Building Safety Board of Appeals.
Okay. And in the memo, you say that that currently is made up by the same members, right?
So, over half the members are on both boards.
Over half. Thank you.
Yes, I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes Sharice.
Okay. Mainly, Nick, what I'm thinking too, is that in the resolution, and this was something that I didn't catch before, that should it be the, that we wish to, to merge the Boards of Appeals, rather than just, where is it? The Property Maintenance Structure Board, going from time to, where is it?
Last where is?
Mayor Marlin, you got it.
It would be on Page 1, under "Now therefore be it ordained," Section 1. I believe it should read, Urbana City Code, Chapter 5, be amended to replace references to the Property Maintenance Structures Code, Board of Appeals, to Building Safety Code, Board of Appeals. Are we missing the word "board" in there?
There's actually three places where "board" is missing. As you were reading, I was like, oh, there's...
So we'll just add "board"?
That's my bad for not being a good, better...
Okay, so we'll just add "board" in there.
I guess I'm taking the chair back.
Can you take the chair back? All right, all right. Really push the chair back to Sharice.
No, is this when you see something, because it was pointed out to me, and it's like, you see something, and you go, oh, no.
When you read something, you know what you want to say, so it's like you just keep reading right past it.
Right. So, yeah. So, anyway, just, I think that's, I'm just saying, I think that's a, definitely an amendment to, into the resolution that probably needs to be made. Shandra. Okay.
I'll move Ordinance Number 2022-05-016, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 5, Building, Fire, and Flood Safety Codes, merging Building Safety Code, Board of Appeals, and Property Maintenance Structures Code, Board of Appeals, onto City Council for approval with the corrections discussed.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Shandra, and seconded by Mary Alice, to move this to City Council for approval. Is there any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colicetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Nick. Next to our next, our next order of business, Council Input and Communications. Chris.
Yeah. So, under our public input rules, that is attached to every agenda, it's under verbal input, in the fourth paragraph, it says, "The presiding officer or public body members shall not enter into a dialogue with citizens. Questions from the public body members," that would be city council members, "shall be for clarification purposes only." So that's what I was thinking, why I could ask a clarifying question.
Okay. But, you know what? You can clarify now, if you want to, during your input.
Well, no, I don't have, I wanted to talk to them. I had questions for the public inputters. But what I'm saying is, that we can ask only questions of the public inputters.
For clarification.
For clarification.
Purposes.
But it does...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it goes on to say that there's no time for problem-solving, or reacting to comments. Just clarifying questions. That's according to the rules. Maybe Mr. Wesner might have an opinion.
Okay, anyone else? Public input, I mean, for council input? Shandra?
I mean, so we got another failure-to-comply ticket report. And we get these, but I don't, is there anything done with them? Because, I mean, date issued is 2019, and this person just keeps coming on to the failure-to-comply report. Like, what does this even mean, then? I wanted to, and then he walked away so quickly.
The way I understand this report is to just give council an update on all open ones. The last time that I was questioned on it, I went back to Nick, and he said most of those that are on there, just because they owe money. And so when they pay for their rental registration for the current year, the money gets applied there first, and then any supplement payments go to pay back, you know, fines and...
So, how often are their rental registrations done? Because if this ticket was issued in 2019, and now it's 2022, so, I was just wondering.
Yeah, annually.
Okay. So is... So is there no enforcement or?
In the past, in fact, the failure-to-comply report was instituted probably 15 years ago, maybe now, in response to several landlords who masked massive amounts of fines, much higher than this, and the council wanted just a tracking of it. These are the, sometimes these end up in ordinance violation court, and sometimes folks are taken to court, but it doesn't happen all the time.
Okay.
And I can let you know the amount of outstanding fines. I don't think at this point it's enough to generate the cost of taking something to court. And they are making a good faith effort.
I see, okay. Well, that helps, thanks.
Okay, Grace.
Thank you. Along that line, which, not to respond, but, yeah, I was curious on this, because I thought that I had read and somewhere had came to understand that this was for building safety, particularly fire code kind of failure to comply, not just financial. But I don't know if you're saying that that can be the case, that there maybe their building is up to code, but they just still owe money, and that's why they're still on this list?
That's the way I understood it, yes.
Yes, I appreciate if we're looking for any more information. I would be interested in a little more of the background about failure to comply with what specifically.
And I'll ask that the report be revised to be more clear. You know, maybe add another column on why it's still on there and what the resolution is.
Mary Alice.